Will you please join us for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Good morning, Mr. Villalobos. Will you please give us the TV announcement and call our roll?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Yes, sir. Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County of Santa Barbara television, CSPTV, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Lompoc, San Inez Valley, Santa Maria and Orchid areas. Rebroadcast of Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSPTV, Channel 20. Now for the roll call. Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Brooks?
Here.
Commissioner Valencia?
Here.
Commissioner Blau?
Here.
And Commissioner Cooney?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Ms. Black. And for you, we request the projection report and the agenda status report.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. This morning you have three items scheduled on your agenda. We are proposing to drop item number two and will reschedule that at a later date for your Planning Commission's consideration. We do have the Las Vegas Ranch Project on your Commission's agenda. We expect that to take the bulk of the day today and to facilitate your hearing, we are bringing in lunch, so I just wanted the Commission to be aware of that. With respect to the projection report, you are meeting next Wednesday as well, on January 25th, special hearing, to consider primarily the Park Hill Estates project. That's a project that you've heard at least once before and will be resuming your consideration of. We also have the Bridge House Shelter acquisition, which is a government code consistency that's required to support some actions that the Board is intending to take early in February. So we're going to put that on your agenda as well. The next meeting is scheduled for February 1st and we'll be resuming our consideration of the mobile home park closure ordinance on that day, as well as finalizing your action on the Cavallo Tree Farm Residential Housing Project. And then we also have the Housing Authority Project, Pescadero Lofts in Isla Vista, for your consideration. February 8th, last meeting, we decided that we would be having that hearing in Santa Barbara. We have several items on that date, including the Barzee Tentative Parcel Map, which is located in the Los Olivos area. We have another Isla Vista project, the Icon Gardens project. And finally, the appeal of the Salentines and Franks of the Brown Grading Project and Horse Arena. February 15th, we had talked about tentatively canceling last week. I would recommend we go ahead and cancel that meeting today. And that will bring us then to your next meeting, which will be on March 7th. And so far, we've got the Montecito Ranch Estates Project on, as well as the 2012-13 work program for the Department, which is going to be going to the Board later on, I think in April.
I have a question.
And then if there are a couple of other items projected out a little ways, but I don't think we need to highlight those today.
Okay. Commissioner Valencia?
No, it's me.
Brooks.
Oh.
No, it's me.
It's Commissioner Blau.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I won't be here next Wednesday. I'm going to be at a, I'm at San Francisco, having some testing done, and unfortunately, they can only do it on Wednesdays, and I can't wait till the 15th, so I'll have to skip next Wednesday.
Okay. Commissioner Blau, sorry to hear that. Any other questions or concerns about the agenda and/or the projection report? Don't see any, thank you, Ms. Black. This is the period in our meeting at which we invite the public to come forward and address the Commission on any matters not on the Commission's agenda today. Do we have any speaker slips, Commissioner Brown? Is there anyone here in that category? Doesn't appear so, so we'll move on then to Planning Commission information reports. And Commissioner Brooks is first.
Yes, I happened to read yesterday online in The Independent that the Mesa Lane Partners had received a state-level award for their project, The Loop, which we heard, and it was part of the Governor's Environmental and Economic Leadership Awards Program. Mr. DiPaolo had gone up to Sacramento to receive this award. I also saw listed that the Albertsons in the city of Santa Barbara had also received an award, so Santa Barbara area did very well.
And Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, in the last few weeks, we've been dealing with a Cavallo family, and they've been taking a lot of shots from a lot of people because of the streets and the project that they had. But something good has happened to that family. One of their family members has been selected to officiate in the Super Bowl for this year. And, gosh, I'm really proud of them. To reach that level, you have to be an exceptional official, and as you know, you're involved in that type of world, Mr. Chair, and I just congratulate them on having somebody at that level officiating for the Super Bowl. I'll just be looking out for him. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Valencia. And Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. Just would like to say something in response to Commissioner Valencia's remarks regarding Cavallos. I think that the neighbors have nothing but praise for the Cavallos as neighbors. It's more of their concern with the project that has taken hits, but the Cavallos have been nothing but very fine citizens, and I'm glad to see that one of them is being elevated to this great status. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Black, are you giving the Director's Report this morning?
Mr. Chair, I am, and it'll be quite brief. Dr. Russell reported last week on all of the Board hearings except yesterday's Board hearing, and there were a few items on that would concern the Commission. The first is that the Board did approve the minor amendments to the Building Code yesterday in their second reading of the item. They also approved the Montecito Growth Management Ordinance Annual Director's Report, and they began the process of granting a public pipeline franchise to the Elwood Pipeline Company, which is a very important step in the Venico Pipeline Project that your Commission saw earlier last year. We expect that item to go back to the Board on February 7th and be wrapped up on the 14th. They also set a hearing to consider change in the Department's fee schedule, and that'll be heard on February 7th as well. It's a proposal to reinstitute fees for ag preserve contracts. So several years ago, the Board of Supervisors eliminated fees necessary to establish or to change an agricultural preserve contract. And given the budget and the lack of state subventions for the program, we felt like it was prudent to at least bring this matter to the Board of Supervisors for their consideration. They may or may not choose to institute those fees. And we did have one item on the departmental agenda, and that was the Baghdasarian Appeal. It's a Montecito case, and that matter was continued until the Board's special hearing next week. That concludes my summary of the Board hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Black. I had a question about the Baghdasarian Appeal, since it presented a question that has come before this Commission at some point in the past, and that is a concern that the project had been amended or proposed to be amended during the appeal period, that is, from the last time that the Planning Commission had seen it, until it came before the Board of Supervisors, there was a substantial change. And the issue was raised by the Montecito Association that this wasn't the right way to do business, that the public didn't have an opportunity before to see the changes and understand them. And then they raised a fiscal issue also in terms of the amount of time that staff had to spend working with the applicant to revise it without any opportunity to be compensated for that time. You know, I realize these cases are few and far between, but we have had those occasions where they've also been presented to this Commission, and the Board, as I understand it, continued the matter for a week to at least allow the community to understand the changes. But I wondered if you had any general comments about the process?
Ms., excuse me, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Well, there is no typical in an appeal, but there are a number of projects that we see appealed where an applicant chooses to modify their project to satisfy interested parties, whether it's staff or the Planning Commission or members of the public. That's not uncommon. What we have tended to do in those instances is to advise the Commission and the applicant that if they want to really engage in modifications to their project, then they're really going beyond what should be covered by a very minimal appeal fee. And we ask often for applicants to agree to pay those costs. And so I believe that that matter will be discussed next week at the Board, and we have advised the applicant to think about whether or not he would be willing to offer to pay those costs. As for the public's ability to review the resolution of the appeal issues and the changes in the project, it does become more difficult when appeals are resolved at the Board of Supervisors, particularly when the resolution occurs pretty late in the process. Your Planning Commission staff reports are available for a week before your hearing, so the public has a bit more time to absorb, and I think that was recognized by Supervisor Carbalha yesterday, and that's why he requested that continuance to allow the Montecito Association and the interested parties to look at the resolution and see if it met their approval so that they could comment on it. So I think we've tried to address both of those issues, but they are a bit awkward in appeals where people change their project.
Well, I appreciate your comments. I realize that you don't want to go forward with an appeal if you can possibly resolve it. On the other hand, we're so accustomed to community involvement throughout our process, it was a legitimate concern raised by the Association, and I think we need to be mindful of it if we have those opportunities ourselves. All right. Any other questions of Ms. Black regarding the Director's Report? It doesn't appear so. So in terms of housekeeping, let's look at the meeting of the 15th of February. It's been proposed that we cancel that meeting. Do we have a motion to do so? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, I would like to move that we cancel that meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Commissioner Valencia, second. Any further discussion about that? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous to cancel the meeting of the 15th. Secondly, we have a matter on our agenda, item two on today's agenda. Mr. Villalobos, would you read that into the record for us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of Lee Burkine and John Delaverson, property owners, to consider case number 10 RMM3, application filed on August 24, 2010, and to approve the addendum to negative declaration 84 ND05 pursuant to the state guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Well, thank you, Mr. Villalobos. The proposal is, Ms. Black, that we cancel this or move it to a different agenda?
Mr. Chair, we're recommending that you go ahead and drop this from your agenda. We partially noticed the item, but we will need to fully notice it at the hearing where you're actually going to take the matter up, so we'll just re-agendize it and re-notice the item.
All right, so that's the proposal. Do we have a motion from the Commission to drop item number two from the current agenda?
I so move.
Commissioner Brooks, thank you. Second?
Second.
Commissioner Valencia, thank you very much. Good to have you back, by the way.
Mr. Chair, would you just make sure there's nobody here to comment before you?
Yes, I will. Was there anyone here to comment on item number two that would like to be heard? I don't see anyone, but thank you for reminding me. All those in favor of dropping item number two from the agenda to be reset at some time in the future indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that brings us to the first item on the agenda. We have only two items left. The briefing on the Regional Transportation Plan, which, Mr. Hunt, do we need any time to? All right, we'll just sit by here for a minute while we set up for that item, and then we'll move to the principal item on today's agenda, the Las Vegas Ranch Project, after a little bit longer break. All right, let's go back on the record if we ever went off. Good morning, Mr. Hunt. Glad to see you and welcome to our meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I'm Jeff Hunt, the Director of Long Range Planning. With me today is Peter Imhoff. He's the Deputy Director of Planning Division for SB CAG staff.
Welcome back, Mr. Imhoff.
Thank you.
I'm going to give a brief introduction, and then Peter will follow up with a PowerPoint, and then we'll be available for questions. Oh, I'm sorry. We need to read it into the record, I understand.
The County Planning Commission will receive a briefing regarding the status and process for adoption of the Regional Transportation Plan, including Sustainable Community Strategy, Regional Growth Forecast, and Regional Housing Needs Allocation.
Thank you, David. We're just so anxious to make our presentation. Unfortunately, I'm going to use a lot of acronyms this morning, as governments are prone to do, but otherwise, it's rather a mouthful. But first of all, what we need to deal with is the Regional Transportation Plan, the RTP, and this document is intended to plan out transportation infrastructure for our county and our eight cities. The SB CAG, the Santa Barbara Council of Government, Association of Governments, must adopt the RTP. With the passage of Senate Bill 375, the RTP must now include a Sustainable Community Strategy, or an SCS, and the SCS is intended to reduce greenhouse gases by integrating land use planning and transportation planning. The SCS must be adopted, or reviewed, pardon me, by the Air Resources Board. In addition, Senate Bill 375 requires that the RENA allocation that we receive from SB CAG, that that be consistent with the projected development patterns that are outlined in the RTP, and also that the RTP must accommodate our RENA numbers. The SB CAG will likely adopt the RTP and give us our RENA numbers at about the same time, and that's anticipated in the summer, spring of 2013. We then have 18 months in which to accommodate our RENA numbers. So it's a very complex project coordinating these three different items. We're trying to integrate transportation planning, indicating where transportation planning infrastructure should go. We need to accommodate our housing needs as a community to determine where our future housing growth should go, and we need to do this in a manner that reduces environmental impacts, including greenhouse gases. So again, it's a very complex situation. We'll be taking this forward to you in the future, but we wanted to give you a briefing today, and with that, I'll turn it over to Peter Imhoff.
Thank you very much. This is an alphabet soup, and I'm going to try to bring this back down to earth and explain, give you a little bit of background on what we're doing, why we're doing it, the timeframe in which we're going to do it, and some of the major issues that you're going to want to be aware of as the County Planning Commission. I'm going to start with some very general background, and some of this may be familiar given the county's work to date on the Climate Action Plan and Climate Action Strategy that you've already heard. But it all begins with the 2006 passage of AB 32, the Global Warming Solutions Act in California, that set targets statewide to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, specifically reducing greenhouse gas emissions to 1990 levels by 2020. That law tasked, gave the responsibility to the California Air Resources Board to come up with a plan to do that. They called that their scoping plan, and that was approved in December of 2008. SB 375 is a separate law passed in 2008, which is one implementing program of the scoping plan, and it accounts for a small percentage of that overall reduction target. So one of the first things that ARB did is it did an inventory statewide to understand where emissions were coming from, which is an important first step, as the county has also done, to begin to deal with the issue of greenhouse gas emissions. So although California emissions represent a very small percentage of the worldwide greenhouse gas emissions, within California, roughly a third of emissions come from transportation. So if you're the ARB and you're tasked with the goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions, if you're going to make progress on that, you have to look to emissions from transportation, and that's what CARB did. CARB took what has been described as a three-legged approach, we've got a little image of a three-legged stool that helps to explain this, so focusing in on that wedge, the approximately 38% of greenhouse gas emissions that come from vehicles, they addressed three separate things. They wanted to look at the efficiency of the vehicles themselves, how the engines operate. If you can improve the efficiency of vehicles, then you can reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Second, they wanted to look at the carbon content of fuels. That's another way to get to reduced emissions. And there are separate laws in place now that regulate both of those areas. And then third, SB 375 tries to get at the other variable here, which is the number of miles that vehicles travel on average. So SB 375, in very general terms, is a piece of anti-sprawl legislation that tries to look at land use patterns and their connection to transportation, which is something that previously was not done explicitly. So the purpose is really, the purpose of SB 375 is to integrate regional planning with respect to transportation, land use and housing. And it creates a new requirement, something called a Sustainable Community Strategy, which regional governments, like the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments, are tasked with completing. That Sustainable Community Strategy becomes part of an existing plan, which is updated regularly, called the Regional Transportation Plan. I'll talk a little bit more about each of those two in detail, but the main purpose of the Regional Transportation Plan in the past has been to program funding out into the future so that projects can be prioritized. Now, the Regional Transportation Plan is going to be explicitly tied to the process that we're all familiar with, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment Process, and the two have to go hand in hand. So this is, through this new vehicle of the Sustainable Community Strategy, we are supposed to achieve specific greenhouse gas reduction targets by reducing vehicle miles traveled from passenger vehicles, so just from cars and light trucks, not from large trucks. And there are two target years that we have to address greenhouse gas emissions in, 2020 and 2035. CARB has reserved the right to revise those targets as time goes on. Also, the RTP will be updated every four years and is now in sync with the RENA cycle, which is an eight-year cycle. So the two are supposed to work in tandem. The greenhouse gas reduction target that the California Air Resources Board decided on for Santa Barbara, for the Santa Barbara region, is a zero net growth per capita target. That means that while emissions can grow overall in step with population, emissions can't grow faster than population. So if you think about that graph on a curve, both the population growth and the emissions growth would have the same slope, but emissions can't grow more steeply than population. So beyond the SB 375-driven greenhouse gas reduction target, there are other things that the SCS has to do, and then as part of the RTP. It has to meet other federal emission standards, and for a while, it looked as though the federal ozone standards were actually going to be more stringent than the California greenhouse gas emission standards, although that is not the case at the moment. The SCS and RTP also have to be, as I indicated, consistent with the way the state mandated housing needs are allocated. So wherever the housing goes, that can't result in traffic increases that would break the, or prevent the SCS from reaching the greenhouse gas reduction target, and I'll explain a little bit, in a little bit more detail, how those two are connected. And then finally, the whole package has to be fiscally constrained, which was, which is nothing new, that's always been the case. Transportation projects that are programmed out into the future have to be transportation projects that can be achieved within foreseeable funding means over the life of that plan. So that, there's some reality to the planning process. So how is this planning process going to work? Well, essentially, SB CAG is going to develop with the guidance of the staff planners and staff public works from the member agencies, the eight cities and the county. We're going to develop a range of different alternative future scenarios. Those scenarios are going to have a land use component, and they'll also have a transportation component. We will then evaluate each of those future scenarios through a series of models. First, we have a land use model that distributes population across, and future population and projected employment across the entire region. Second, the outputs of that are run through a travel demand model that tells us how a given scenario performs with respect to, with respect to various transportation measures. So principally, how are commute trips affected within the region, given certain assumptions about where future growth goes? And then finally, the results of that, of that travel demand model are run through another program that turns vehicle miles traveled into their equivalent in CO2 emissions. So there's a direct relationship between the number of miles traveled and emissions. And out of that process, the SB CAG Board will then select a preferred scenario for the future, which will become the main scenario that's addressed and becomes part of the Sustainable Community Strategy. So the SCS, again, has to include the location of various uses, densities and building intensities, and that means different types of uses, residential, commercial, industrial and so on. It has to accommodate the entire projected population and provide enough housing to do so out to our planning horizon of 2040, but with specific focus on this next eight-year RENA cycle. It has to include a transportation network to service the region's transportation needs, and it also has to address open spaces through what's called a regional green print. So it will look at and catalog parks and open space, habitat areas, agricultural lands and so on. What is the real planning? What is the real planning problem, so to speak here? What do we have to do? The state has set a target for us, which is represented by the black line on this graph. Essentially, emissions can't increase, per capita emissions can't increase from where they are now. So we have to come up with a package of policy measures, land use, transportation, and otherwise, which reduce emissions in the future back down below that line. We have to at least meet that black line. Our initial runs at this in 2010, during the target-setting process, had a business-as-usual projection that was well above the state target, and putting in certain measures, we still didn't quite meet that target. So now, we're in the process of upgrading our travel models, and we're doing a new regional growth forecast, we're going to have some new inputs and some new tools, and we're going to start again on this process and see how we can meet these, the state Some basic possible theoretical approaches that will be discussed with the Technical Planning Advisory Committee and Technical Transportation Advisory Committee, the staff planners and the staff public works staff from the member agencies are, first, you can rebalance the land use mix. You can reduce the average commute by moving housing closer to jobs or jobs closer to housing. And through the land use model, we'll be able to model exactly where people reside and where people go to work, and then see how it is that they move back and forth between jobs and their homes. We'll also be looking at other types of trips, not just, not just commute trips. You can also change the share of people who are using cars or relying exclusively on cars as a means of transportation. So you can increase transit, either the service itself by adding new bus lines or even a rail line, or increasing access by shifting where transit lanes go. You can increase carpooling, for example, through the high occupancy vehicle lane that's being proposed, or shift people to other modes like biking or walking. There are other mechanisms like traffic management and intelligent transportation systems that simply manage better the flow of traffic on the existing roads, and that's another way to address VMT. Then through promoting employer incentives, transportation demand management that would include things like a promotion of walking and biking, you can also reduce emissions. And then finally, through pricing systems, subsidizing transit or increasing the cost of parking, you can theoretically affect behavior. So this is just kind of a rundown of what the theoretical options are that can be considered. The process involves working with a number of different agencies simultaneously, working with the state agencies that oversee this process, principally the California Air Resources Board, but also Caltrans, the State Housing and Community Development Department with respect to the housing component of this, the FHA with respect to federal emissions. We then also have to be working closely with our neighboring metropolitan planning organizations, SLOCOG to the north and the Southern California Association of Governments to the south. We have to share information with them, and because interregional commuting is such an issue, that's something which affects all of the neighboring regions. And then finally, of course, we have to work very closely with the cities and the county, with the Chumash Tribe, UCSB, and the Vandenberg Air Force Base. So what are the roles of local agencies, and what are some of the things that they're going to be called on to do? We want to collaborate very closely with the member agencies on the development of the SES, including especially how we derive the regional growth forecast that projects out population, and how we address the always ticklish and controversial issue of the allocation of the state mandated housing need. We need to identify sufficient sites in the housing element to accommodate RENA, and so that's something which ultimately is going to fall to all of the local governments. You'll have to amend your housing elements to accommodate the RENA that is allocated to a given jurisdiction, nothing new there. And you can identify the potential for transit priority projects that would be subject to sequoia streamlining, which is one of the benefits of SB 375. Finally, it's important to note and underline that this SES process does not in any way change the balance of land use authority. Local governments retain their land use authority, retain the ability to determine land uses within their own jurisdiction. The SES only creates a framework and a plan. The local government land use elements and housing elements have to be consistent with that plan as far as the RENA is concerned, but beyond that, local governments have complete authority over their own land use. So our basic project timeline here, this past fall and winter, we've been developing tools, we're doing a model upgrade of our existing travel model and a land use model. We have been doing targeted stakeholder outreach, meeting with a range of different groups around the county, and planning commissions and decision-makers to alert them to this process, let them know about what's going on. We will then be going into the development of scenarios and the analysis of those scenarios this spring with public workshops targeted for this summer, where we'll bring back the results of our analysis on different scenarios and show decision-makers and members of the public exactly how different options fare in terms of the different targets that we have to meet. Then next fall, we'll start our environmental review, and we'll begin drafting the Regional Transportation Plan and Sustainable Community Strategy, looking ahead to adoption in the spring or summer of 2013. In August, the SB CAG Board, which consists of the five members of the Board of Supervisors and representatives from each of the eight cities, they adopted a public participation plan, a three-phase plan. We're presently wrapping up the first phase of that, which consists of the scoping meetings with stakeholders. The second phase will involve the public workshops that I mentioned, and then the third phase will involve the adoption of the preferred scenario through the draft RTP and SES. So shown a little bit more graphically, we're taking the kind of classic planning approach of a funnel, starting very broad, talking to a lot of people, getting input, inviting people to participate, and then we're going to focus down into, through the public workshop phase, into the public hearings that adopt this plan. So that is my summary. I know it's very broad, it is a very complicated area, but I'm happy to answer any questions and give any more background I can on what we're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Imhoff. First of all, do you have copies of the PowerPoint? You know, you covered a lot of material that we're not familiar with, and I think if we had a chance to look at the terminology...
Mr. Chair, it is available on our website. I don't have printed copies, but I'm happy to, we'll get that link to you.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Imhoff, I was just wondering, I can remember when this process started, and I think I went to a local workshop up in the Lompoc Valley regarding it. We have a recession going on now. I look at the EIR that we have for a project that we're going to be discussing later today, and I believe the traffic study there indicated a 20% reduction in traffic along the 101 in that particular area. As I go up and down the 101 and the 1, I'm noticing perhaps fewer, oh definitely fewer cars, that's for sure. But I'm thinking, am I seeing fewer Clean Air Express buses? So my point is, and my question is, is the state going to do any adjustment to reflect, you know, kind of current conditions since this all began? What do you think?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brooks, we are negotiating right now with a couple of different agencies simultaneously. One is the California Air Resources Board, and the second, which is perhaps really where the rubber hits the road, is the State Housing and Community Development Department. They base their estimate of regional housing need on a number of different factors, on estimates of future population and future employment, where population is really a function of employment. So theoretically, yes, they should be taking into account the current economic downturn and how that is going to affect their economic projections forward. They look to and rely on the Department of Finance's projections, and they're also required by law under SB 375 to consider our regional growth forecast as they come up with their number. So we are proceeding very carefully to develop our own numbers, and we're going to continue to be in negotiation with State HCD. We're expecting a preliminary estimate from them very soon, and that's something which will be immediately published and shared so that everybody can see what that number is, and then there'll be further discussions initially through the advisory committees and then through our board as to what that means and how we begin to address that. So we certainly hope that the state will take that into account, I guess is the short answer. And you're correct, by the way, traffic counts are showing that there's reduced, there are reduced trips on both the, on the south 101 and on the north part of the county.
Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. Mr. Imhoff, this is sort of a follow-on from Commissioner Brooks's question. Even though there has been a reduction in traffic, in local traffic, just, this is an anecdotal observation, is that traffic on local streaks has increased. I mean, without any projects, and I just think about where I live, and I noticed that congestion is more, even though that, I guess, overall is decreased. But the question is, as you employ or implement the Sustainable Community Strategy, which probably means more transit-oriented development, I would presume that that's kind of where you're going, it seems to me, in order to achieve your goals, there has to be a, at the same time, implementation of public transit to ensure people take transit, because otherwise they're driving cars. So you don't, so you may well achieve a reduction in commute, say, from north county to south county. You have more people in south county driving cars if public transit isn't available. So do you, how do you, how do you look at all those things together? Because certainly there's got to be pieces of this that has to be...
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, I think you've hit on a very important linkage there. In November, the SB CAG Board adopted goals, objectives, and performance measures for the entire RTP, and those goals and objectives go beyond just environmental considerations and air quality considerations. They also address congestion, the security and reliability of the system, housing and equity considerations, and also economic considerations. Specifically, there's a goal to maintain a prosperous economy through this, and many of the, many of the goals and objectives are connected. Many of the, the objectives really work in tandem. We want our transportation system to function well, we want, we want people to be able to move back and forth easily and reliably, and that, that does require focusing on a smaller scale as well as a larger scale. So that is something we're going to be looking at. We have a new and much more robust model, I'm happy to say, or will have, once it's completed, that will look at not just the transportation system and the roadway network, but also a transit network, a bike network, and pedestrian movement. So we have a truly multimodal model that will take into account what are known as 4D variables, density and other factors, and that is something which will then be discussed and vetted at length, initially through the advisory councils that, or committees that guide us, and then through our board.
And one last question. You've indicated that you've done presentation to stakeholders groups. Are these just presentations, or are you receiving feedback which, if, which are then implemented into some of the, your efforts? The reason for my question is that not everybody attends SB CAG meetings or meetings involving this, and that your outreach provides an extra opportunity for stakeholders, because you're basically going to them and doing presentations to them, to provide some feedback to you.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, definitely. We've been seeking input on a number of different things. Last fall, we were seeking input on the development of the goals, performance measures, and objectives that I mentioned, and we got a lot of good feedback from members of the public and stakeholder groups, as well as healthy discussion at the advisory committees on that. And then even more fundamentally, we've been asking for input on the scenario development, and we welcome input from all quarters on that. That's really one of the most important steps in this process, is defining that initial range of scenarios. What should we consider, and what should those scenarios contain? So we've, we've been, we have very actively solicited input on that as part of our stakeholder outreach.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Mr. Imhoff, I was struck by the slide showing the per capita greenhouse gas generation, that one. The yellow line, business as usual, shows substantially more than the current level. And I just wondered, what factors have you identified that are increasing the greenhouse gas emission if we just keep going the way we are now?
Mr. Chair, very good question, and it has to do with location decisions and transportation choices that are driven largely by housing options in areas that are job centers, like the south coast of Santa Barbara, and, and housing affordability. So there's been a trend for the past at least 15 years, as the south coast in particular has grown less affordable, workers have had to think about housing options, and there's been a trend moving toward outlawing regions, specifically Ventura, Oxnard, and then the north part of the county, Lompoc and Santa Maria, Orket. So if that trend continues, if there aren't better options for transportation or housing, then we would expect to see the average commute distance increase over time. And that is one of the principal variables that would drive up per capita emissions. You'd have, we expect to see a steadily increasing population in Santa Barbara. We have projections of roughly, we're working on our updated regional growth forecast now, but we expect to see something on the order of a 30% increase in population by 2040. That's going to be driven by jobs, so we have more jobs coming into the, into the county. And meanwhile, the baby boom generation is getting older, getting older, retiring, and many people, as they retire, they decide to remain in their existing homes and not move out of the area. So that, in effect, drinks up more of the housing supply. So we have a couple of different factors that are then limiting housing options and transportation options. So those are some of the factors, and those are things that we will be able to evaluate in detail and quantitatively show as we get our new model up and running and start looking at scenarios. One of the scenarios that we'll look at will be, we'll look at a current baseline scenario, and then we'll also look at a future baseline scenario, which is essentially a status quo scenario without any land use changes or transportation changes, and that will be one of the touchstones against which we look at alternative scenarios to see how those perform.
Well, I see we could get into more detail, but I'll give Commissioner Blough a chance.
Well, my only question is, your greenhouse emissions and your pounds of carbon that you're, these are estimates, there's no measurement, am I correct? I mean, do we actually go out and measure how much carbon dioxide was in the air in 1990, and are we going to measure it in year 2020?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blough, no, we don't directly measure carbon in the air, but we do measure it as a function of vehicle miles traveled, and there's a fairly regular relationship between miles driven in a car and emissions, if we know what the mileage of that car is. So the state has mandated changing standards for vehicle emissions, so we know, we can, we assume that if vehicles in the future meet the state's standards with respect to emissions, then we know for a given mile traveled how much emissions are generated. So really, what we're focusing on principally is the transportation system itself, how the transportation system functions. Then, as I showed you, we run the numbers that are generated by that modeling through a package that their resources board produces that turns vehicle miles traveled into emissions. And there's, there's a pretty, you know, straightforward relationship between those two. There's no hocus pocus there.
Okay. Well, the only comment I'll make is that we had this discussion, I don't know, a couple of months ago, and I shared with the other commissioners some information I cleaned off the internet, talked about sequestration, and they talked about a mature tree consumes, I forget now, the number of pounds of carbon dioxide. I mean, based on the research I did, I mean, if one person plants 60 trees, I think that takes care of their carbon emission, period. So if you, it seems to me it's a lot cheaper to plant trees than what you're going through in this direction, try and reduce emissions, and you're not really measuring it, you're just sort of guessing. The model may be good, but for me, it's, for me, it's kind of junk science at this point.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blough, the one comment I would make is that, and this goes back to the chair's earlier question, is that this is really something that's about more than just vehicle emissions and air quality. This is something that really is about how we want to see our region grow and/or deal with growth in the future, growth that's inevitable. And I think it's important, even though SB 375 is, what's driving this are nominally environmental considerations and air quality considerations, it's important... environmental considerations and air quality considerations, it's important to think about it in terms of the larger picture, and, and really what this means for the shape of our region in the future.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add on to that. In terms of the local climate plan that is going through the process, one of the reduction measures is urban forestry, or more trees in order to reduce greenhouse gases, based on your comments. So that is part of the local county greenhouse gas reduction plan. But I, I agree with Peter that this, this SB 375 legislation, there tends to be a lot of focus on greenhouse gas reduction, but it's also been called the anti-sprawl bill, where in effect, we're linking transportation and land use and reducing congestion by putting the future jobs and transportation close, future housing and transportation closer to the jobs. And as a result, we'll have a land use pattern that is somewhat different than, than we could have if we didn't link those two. And it should be less sprawled out as a result. So it's not just merely reducing greenhouse gases, there is a large land use component.
Sounds like planning to me, and lots of it. And we appreciate SB CAG's leadership, and you, Mr. Imhoff, in bringing this to us. And you're welcome back at any point to give us an update on how things are going. Any further questions? I don't see any. Oh, Commissioner Brown, sorry.
Thank you. I just have a comment. I think that, I don't know, I spoke, have spoken to Mr. Imhoff last year, that he does a fine job of outreach, but I think it would be helpful, and I would appreciate perhaps seeing you periodically, because lots of people watch this on TV, and you reach people that aren't necessarily part of a group. They're just the average citizens, and I think it would help to explain to our citizenry these policies and resulting land use actions. So, Mr. Hunt, if you would, once, I think just, I think it'd be just nice to see Mr. Imhoff and to come back and brief and give us periodic updates. Would be helpful for me, anyway. Thank you.
I'd be very happy to share more information periodically as we go forward. And I would also just note that Director Hunt is very closely engaged in this process through the Technical Planning Advisory Committee that is overseeing this work. So you can get a lot of good information from your own staff, that we will certainly be sharing more information, especially as we develop our scenarios and start in on this analysis. But Director Hunt is going to be another really good source of information on this.
And Mr. Chairman, we'll be happy to give briefings periodically. At the very least, the update to the housing element has to come through this commission for your comments and recommendations. There's opportunities on some of these other projects to give you briefings, and we will seek out those opportunities. I don't think it'll be the same formal process as the housing element, but we can still give briefings and have discussions.
Well, it does point out how much is going on behind the scenes. The Technical Planning Advisory Committee, what, do you call that something, T-PAC?
T-PAC. We have an acronym for that, too.
Nice of you to spell it out for us the first time. And so we, you know, we're here interested, I think we're representative of that part of the citizenry that cares about the future of Santa Barbara County, and certainly, the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions is, is one of the focal points that I think in this county, we're adopting a leadership position, as opposed to wait until we absolutely have to do something, and then grudgingly go along. So we encourage that, and thank you very much for your time this morning. All right, we're ready to go to item number three. We'll take a seven-minute break and start at five after 10:00. We are back and ready to go on item number three on our agenda today. This, the 18th of January 2012. Mr. Vialobos, will you read this item into the record, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of Susan Petrovich, agent for the applicant to consider case number 05TPM2, 05LLA5, 05LLA6, 07RZN6, 07RZN7, 11COC1, and 11CDP78, applications filed on February 28, 2005, May 8, and July 19, 2007, and December 2, and 6, 2011, and to certify the environmental impact report 10EAR5 pursuant to the state guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you, Mr. Vialobos. Commissioners, do we have ex parte to report on this project? Commissioner Brooks is first.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Cooney. Yes, to tell you the truth, I never heard of this property until early December, and I went out and I did my site visit with Mr. Paul Van Leeuwen. I appreciate the very detailed tour that we had of the property, and that was about a month ago, I think, December 22nd. I have had, besides all the other information other commissioners have received, I had a lengthy phone conversation just yesterday with Ms. Citron, and I had a meeting this week with representatives from several of the trails groups.
Thank you. Commissioner Brooks, Commissioner Brown?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Similar to Commissioner Brooks, I, in fact, I did a site visit with Commissioner Brooks. Mr. Van Leeuwen was very generous of his time to take us throughout the site. Met with the trails group last week, and had a phone conversation with Ms. Citron on Monday, and that's it, I think. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, just, I received the invitation to do a, a site tour, which I declined, although I did tell them that I would want to do one, but probably after this meeting and before we make our final recommendation.
And you spoke with someone from the applicant?
I believe it was Ms. Petrovich's associate, yes.
I did have the opportunity to tour the property with Mr. Van Leeuwen last week, and very extensive. I, previous to that, had a meeting with several representatives of different trail groups who have been involved in the review process for this project, specifically Otis Califf, Ray Ford, Mike Lunsford, Kevin Snow, and Reeve Woolpert. In addition to that, I've had brief conversations with various council regarding their presentations, and not with regard to the substance of the proceeding. So with that, on the record, I think we're ready for our staff report. Welcome back, Mr. Tuttle. It's always good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the commission, unfortunately, for better or worse, you'll be seeing a lot of me over the next few weeks. So I've put together a presentation that roughly follows the, the outline of the staff report, and you'll probably be familiar with the, the approach and content. I'll provide a little background of the, of the project site, dive into the project description, provide an overview of some of the key issues from the environmental analysis, and then review the policy consistency with some specific emphasis on trails issues and public access, and then review the ordinance compliance, and conclude with staff's recommendation. Just to familiarize everyone with the project site, it's a large property, 1,800 acres, straddling the freeway in eastern Gaviota. It extends from the Pacific Ocean all the way up to Los Padres National Forest. The property is zoned agriculture. In the coastal zone, it's Ag 2100, and in the inland areas, it's still zoned unlimited agriculture under Old Ordinance 661. The ranch is composed of 10 separate parcels. One of the parcels is an 18-acre parcel that is not included as a part of this project. It's being kept out. There are seven parcels that have certificates of compliance. One lot on the coastal end along the bluffs that was illegally created, and for which they're requesting a conditional certificate of compliance as part of this application. And then one lot, a small one-acre lot north of the freeway that has yet to be validated, they're proposing to merge it as part of this project with, with Lot 6 on the north side of the freeway. The ranch, as you see in the photos, and if you have toured the site, is bisected both by the highway, as well as the railroad tracks, and those two interventions are fee ownerships by other entities, and it's for that reason that this project is sort of separated in various applications, rather than a single, a single application. So there's five lots, five existing parcels north of the freeway, two existing parcels in between the freeway and the railroad, and then three existing parcels in between the railroad and the Pacific Ocean. Regardless of the makeup, it is operated as a, currently as a single operation. From an agricultural perspective, there's a grazing operation utilizing the entire ranch, and there's approximately 200 acres of orchards throughout various portions of the property. So the project description is a combination of lot line adjustments, mergers, and a tenant parcel map. And specifically, the three parcels in between the Pacific Ocean and railroad are proposed for a lot line adjustment that would result in the three parcels being adjusted and merged into two parcels of 55 and 58 acres each. And it's, that includes a conditional certificate of compliance, as I mentioned, to legalize the middle, the existing middle lot. Then in between the ocean, or the railroad and the highway, it's a tenant parcel map to divide the two existing parcels into three parcels of 100 acres, 147, and 157 acres in size. And then to the north of the highway, there's a lot line adjustment combination with a merger to create, to, to take the four existing parcels and merge and adjust them into two parcels of 150, and then a large parcel of a little over 1,100 acres. And here is a site plan that helps identify those three separate applications. So again, on the north side of the freeway, you have the existing parcels, which are shown with the yellow border, converting into the two larger parcels with the red outline. This is parcel 7, 150 acres, and then you have this large parcel, what we refer to as parcel 6, which is the 1,100 acre site. And then in between the freeway and railroad, again, you have the two existing parcels with essentially a line separating them down the middle currently, resulting in, with a tenant parcel map, to three parcels roughly equally separated. And then again, on the coastal portion, you have the three existing parcels with an eight acre, 94 acre, and 11 long skinny parcel acre, turning into, with a lot line adjustment, into two parcels, lots one and two. And we can refer back to this throughout the presentation if there's any questions. This is just a table that was in the staff report that I wanted to provide as well, and that just shows, again, the relationship between the existing parcels and the proposed parcels. And it also identifies the development envelopes, which I'll speak to momentarily. But essentially, each, each proposed parcel would identify a future residential development envelope, ranging in size from approximately 2 and 1/2 acres up to 5 acres. And it's within those envelopes that any future non-agricultural development would be confined to. The project also includes a shared water system, which is another application, a minor CUP, and it would be, include a treatment facility to treat the water that would be diverted from the existing reservoir at the north end, the upper end of the property, and would be used to serve any future residential development. And the inland portions of the property, which, as I mentioned, are, still are zoned under the old ordinance 661, anytime an application such as this that's coming in for a discretionary permit, we take these opportunities to rezone them to be consistent with our current ordinance, so those would be rezoned to Ag 2100 under the land use development code. So as I mentioned, the project includes the identification of residential development envelopes. However, at this time, as part of this project, or these projects before you, there's no development or no residential development proposed. Within each envelope, the applicant has identified that future development would be limited to two contiguous acres within the larger development envelope. And the thinking behind that is that identifying a larger envelope would provide some flexibility in the future to cite that individual two acres within the larger envelope. And the other thinking behind it is that that two-acre allotment is consistent with our standard in the uniform rules for agricultural preserve projects, or parcels in Ag Preserve, as far as the allowance for non-agricultural development. The project also includes improved access roads to serve the future development envelopes, or to serve each envelope and the future development. Those largely predominantly follow existing ranch roads that would just be improved to meet fire department standards. This is more of a blow-up of the site, and as you can see on each parcel outlined in sort of the blue dotted are the proposed residential envelopes of the project. And like I said, they range from approximately 2 and 1/2 acres up to 5 acres. On Lot 6, because the, that lot is so large, and there's various, various opportunities for citing a future home site, the applicant selected, rather than a single envelope, selected to identify three building areas, or building sites, what we refer to as A, B, and C, with the intention that a future owner of that lot, or the existing owner of that lot choosing to develop a home, would be limited to a two-acre block within one of these three building sites. But at this point, they haven't, haven't specified which one it is, so, and I'll speak to this when we discuss the EIR, but essentially, the EIR evaluated the potential for any of these three areas to be utilized for, for future residential purposes. It's worth noting that on Parcels 4 and 5, which are south of the highway, the exist, or the proposed development envelopes contain existing development already. On Lot 5, there's an existing main residence within the development envelope. And then on Lot 4, the envelope contains a few barns, as well as an old historic residence. In addition to the future development and the access roads, the project also proposes the dedication, or offer dedication to the county of three public trail easements. That includes a lateral easement along the sandy beach, fronting the property, 25-foot lateral access easement along the north side of the highway, roughly following the alignment of Caeran, Old Caeran. And then a 15-foot wide vertical access easement that would provide access down to the beach, presuming authorization from the railroad to get under the culvert, which is, runs under the railroad right adjacent to the, to the sandy beach. In addition to those easements, the applicant would set aside an area for a 30-space parking lot that they would construct concurrent with their first residence south of the highway. As I mentioned, the vertical access for, for the public to be able to get access all the way to the beach, because of the existing railroad, they would have to, the county would have to obtain an easement from the railroad for, for that passage, and I can speak to that a little bit later. In addition, the lateral coastal trail on the north side of the freeway, in order to avoid or minimize conflicts with the existing ag operation and ag use in that area, the applicant has indicated that for that access easement to be applicant has indicated that for that access easement to be opened, the county would need to construct a pedestrian bridge over the Gato Creek underpass to avoid conflicts with use of that underpass or culvert for, for ranch and grazing purposes. As I mentioned, the future development would be served by a private shared water system as well as individual septic drywall systems. The water system includes a single treatment facility located north of the highway, two large storage, storage tanks, again, located north of the highway, and a distribution system, pipelines running to, to serve each lot. The agricultural operations would continue to be served for irrigation purposes by the existing Edwards reservoir using the existing infrastructure. It's proposed that the grazing operation would continue to be collectively managed and operated, but that the orchards, since not all the parcels contain orchards, it's proposed by the applicant that the orchards be under the individual control of each lot, that there would be in their CCNRs performance standards and best management practices that would need to be followed. So that concludes discussion of the project description or overview of the project description. Now looking at the EIR analysis. We did prepare, the county did prepare an EIR pursuant to CEQA. There was a scoping hearing held in June of 2008. A draft EIR was released in January of 2011. Public environmental hearing to take input and comments on the draft EIR was held on March 3, 2011. And response to comments and revisions to the EIR in response to the comments we received results in, and release of the final EIR in just last month in December of 2011. The EIR issue areas discussed included aesthetics, visual resources, agricultural resources, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, fire protection, geologic processes, hazardous materials, land use, recreation, transportation, and water resources. But I'm just going to focus in today's presentation on some of the more key and pertinent issues associated with this project. In terms of aesthetics and visual resources, as I mentioned, the project doesn't actually propose any structural development at this point or future residential development, so that in order to analyze the potential or what could foreseeably occur as part of this project in the future, we looked at visual simulations of what future development within each envelope, envelope might be in terms of their visibility primarily from public viewpoints. This site is as if, as if you've driven by, offers expansive views of the coastline as well as the foothills of the San Andres Mountains, including many views open to the public both along the freeway as well as the railroad, the beach, and nearshore waters. These views are high quality and important views along the coast. The visual simulations, again, were conducted to look at sort of the worst-case scenario as far as what future development might, might be in terms of its visibility and impacts from public view sheds. And what the simulations demonstrated is that there would be the potential for impacts to these public views depending on exactly where future development were cited and located and how tall it were. And as a result of that, the EIR identified various mitigation measures to restrict future development and ensure that future development is, the impacts of future development are minimized from a visual standpoint. That includes height restrictions 15 feet south of the highway with, which is consistent with the view corridor overlay requirements, and 16 feet north of the highway, which is generally consistent with our hillside ridgeline requirements, requiring that the future development be compatible with the care, scale and character of surrounding development, which is largely rural in nature. Specifically, there's a requirement that future development be compatible with the existing rural historic landscape, which was discussed and I'll speak to again in the, in the cultural resource section. But making sure that future development is consistent with that rural landscape and both the scale and, and size and design consistent with the existing historic buildings. Additionally, setting back future development on lots one and two from the beach so that the public walking along the beach would not have, those structures would not intrude into the skyline as viewed from the public or break the view plane of the San Andres Mountains as viewed by the public. Lastly, the identification of night sky provisions and lighting restrictions to ensure that the existing dark sky is, is maintained. For agricultural resources, as I mentioned, the site contains approximately 200 acres of orchards and there's roughly 630 acres that are suitable for grazing throughout the ranch. As part of the EIR, a rangeland assessment was prepared which looked at, focused on the grazing aspect of the property. And what it concluded was from, as a, as a collective operation, as a, as a whole property, the, the site exceeded the, what's typically considered the minimum carrying capacity to support a viable grazing operation. But if you looked at the standalone parcels on an individual basis, they, none of them were large enough to support a viable grazing operation and the necessary carrying capacity. So what it concluded was that the continued operation of the ranch as a whole would not affect the viability of the operation and the lot divisions and the lot line adjustments that are proposed as part of the project also would not impact the viability of the grazing operation. In addition to the grazing operation, the EIR looked at the orchard operation and once again concluded that the project, both the reconfiguration of the lots as well as the identification of development envelopes would not affect the viability of the existing orchard operations, both from a standpoint of the ranch as a whole as well as the individual parcels that contain the orchards. There's only one, one small corner of the building site 6A on lot six that contains orchards. The rest of the envelopes were sited away from any of the orchard areas. But in addition to the direct impacts, there is, the EIR identified various indirect impacts that could occur largely associated with public access and recreational components of the project, but also with the potential for future residents within the site to have conflicts that are fairly common when residences are sited close to an active ag operation. So in order to reduce those impacts, various mitigation measures were identified in the EIR including periodic trail closures during pesticide applications, identification of a buyer notification program that would be incorporated with the CCNR so that essentially it's a buyer beware similar to our right to farm ordinance which notifies future purchasers of the individual lots that they are going to be living in an actively farmed property. In addition, there is proposed mitigation that would include language inserted into the CCNRs protecting the long-term viability of agricultural operation. And lastly, not a mitigation measure, but it's a reference that the applicant would be constructing fencing along the trails to protect the adjacent ag operations from theft or vandalism or liability. And tho, those are also important measures in protecting the ag viability of the property. The EIR looked at biological resources. The project site is large and contains numerous sensitive resources including patches of native grasslands, riparian cor, several riparian corridors and small wetlands, sensitive wildlife species such as California red-legged frog, raptor foraging for whitel kites and other raptor species, as well as a couple groves of eucalyptus that are, been identified as monarch overwintering sites. With the project, there is potential impact on these resources from future development and the infrastructure improvements. And these include impacts associated with the new bridge over Gato Creek, vegetation removal, erosion and disturbance of wildlife from new construction, the location of various development envelopes adjacent to or within areas containing sensitive vegetation, and impacts to wildlife from new development and human habitation. The EIR concluded specifically that there would be a class one impact associated with a lot two development envelope due to its proximity adjacent to Gato Creek and habitat for red-legged frog and other sensitive aquatic species. Mitigation measures, there are several, but some of the key ones included bird surveys prior to construction to make sure there's no nesting or roosting habitat within 500 feet of construction. Application of erosion sediment control during construction of the pedestrian bridge, or not, sorry, not pedestrian bridge, the bridge over Gato Creek. Establishment of buffers from the future development of, adjacent to sensitive habitat, which would be a minimum of 100-foot buffer for most of the resources, 30-foot buffer for the native grasslands. Fuel management plan which would be balanced with resource protection, preparation of any revegetation and restoration plans of disturbed areas with native plants, and restoration of the area associated with the Gato Creek Bridge to restore the areas that were temporarily disturbed. In addition, due to the sensitive habitat present on lots one and two, preparation of a habitat protection avoidance plan associated with future development, reduction of the envelope on lot two to reduce impacts to Gato Creek, protection and buffer setback from monarch habitat. And lastly, aligning any of the water lines to make sure that they avoid sensitive plant Historic resources, as I mentioned, the project site south of the highway was studied by architectural historians and peer reviewed by the county, and it was determined that that area south of the highway qualifies and is eligible for listing as a rural historic landscape both at the state and national levels. It contains numerous historically significant buildings dating back to the late 1800s, early 1900s. The historic structures would be, would remain as part of the project. There's no plans to demolish or, or, or impact them in any means. But development of new residences or new development in the area of the lands, rural historic landscape does have the potential to impact the landscape if, if incompatible structures are, are imposed. And so the mitigation includes both preserving the existing historic structures but also ensuring that any new development is compatible in size, bulk, scale, height, and style with the existing historic structures. And that would all be verified as new development is proposed by an architectural historian, peer reviewed by the county to ensure that any future development is consistent with the Secretariat interiors standards. There are also numerous recorded archaeological sites on the ranch. Largely new development and infrastructure has been cited to avoid or lessen impacts to these resources. For example, lot seven envelope has been reduced and configured to avoid resource as well as rerouting of an access road. There's mitigation measure identified for lot three to reduce that envelope, once again to avoid impacts to a, a cultural resource. However, there's also the potential for, given the general cultural sensitivity of the site, for unknown resources to be detected or encountered during grading and construction. The site has been surveyed, all the areas of proposed development have been surveyed, surveyed as part of the EIR, but there's always the potential of unknown encounters. So monitoring during construction and following the necessary appropriate steps if any, any artifacts are found during construction would mitigate those impacts. From a recreation standpoint, there are no established recreational facilities or trails within the project site that would be impacted. The closest trails would be located at El Capitan State Beach or in the inland portions of the park west of the project site. The EIR does acknowledge that there is on, current unauthorized access through the ranch largely by surfers accessing Edwards Point. And there's the potential for, for that unauthorized access to be impacted associated with future development on lots one and two because the individuals who do access the point park west of the property, walk along the railroad tracks, and then, then overland down to Edwards Point in the vicinity of lots one and two. As I mentioned in the project description, the project does include two trail easements as well as lateral beach access to expand the project's recreational opportunities in the area. The vertical trail easement would remove a significant barrier to establishing formal beach access in the point that is one of the only areas available for public beach access in between existing points of access at El Capitan State Beach and the Bakara Resort. Future development within the ranch does have the potential, if not designed properly, to degrade the recreational experience of, of the recreating public. For example, reflective building materials or bright colors that, that make a residence stand out, those types of designs, if, if not properly, properly designed, could, could impact and degrade the recreational experience. In addition, development on lots one and two, if not set back far enough from the, from the bluff edge or from the beach, could impact or degrade the recreational experience of beachgoers and surfers at Edwards Point. Mitigation that was identified to reduce aesthetic impacts and impacts on the historic resources would similarly reduce impacts to recreation as well. And the mitigation also includes establishment of a minimum setback from the bluff or beef, beach edge at lots one and two in order to ensure that there's no skyline intrusion or degradation of the view looking up towards the San Andres Mountains. As a, in order to ensure part of this, there would be a review of, of any future development by the BAR as well as story polls associated with that, that review. The EIR evaluated several alternatives and I'll just highlight those. Among those are the no project alternative, which essentially assumed the property would stay in its existing parcel configuration and there would be future development under the existing parcel configuration on any of the vacant or underdeveloped lots. Under the no project alternative, there wouldn't be the trail easements offered as part of the project. And looking at the existing parcel configuration, under the no project alternative, it was assumed that there could be between seven or eight of the parcels could be developed under this alternative. This alternative would result in greater impacts on agriculture and archaeological resources because of the location of the, of the different parcels in their current configuration as well as the lack of, of any control or proposed restriction on the, on the amount of land that would be locate, or dedicated to non-agricultural use. However, there would be fewer impacts on biological historic resources as well as transportation with the, not having the public access, accessing the site on a regular In addition to the no project alternative, the EIR looked at a reduced project alternative, two options on that. The first is option A, which if you look at the envelopes, building envelopes on lots one through five, on lots one through five, uh, it essentially reduces those envelopes to two and a half acres or less. So the outlines in blue represent, uh, the reductions. Uh, in the case of lot four, it's, uh, slightly shifted and reduced in size, uh, to, uh, have it less visible from the freeway. Uh, in addition, under this alternative would be a reduction in, uh, building heights, uh, consistent with the fifteen and sixteen feet inland and coastal. And under this alternative, impacts to visual resources, biological resources and cultural resources would be reduced, uh, other impacts generally the same as with the proposed project. And largely these, uh, impacts would, visual and biological and cultural resources would be reduced, uh, by, uh, reducing, uh, the visibility, uh, of future development, uh, reducing the, the extent of the envelopes and citing them in areas that are, uh, less sensitive from a biological and cultural resource standpoint. Uh, the second option for a reduced project alternative, uh, was, uh, similar to the first, except different locations for the envelopes on lots one and two. Uh, in this case, the envelope on lots, uh, on lot two would be the, the front half, limited to the front half of the, uh, development envelope. Uh, again, compared to the proposed project, this alternative would result in, uh, fewer impacts to visual, biological and cultural resources, uh, as well as recreational resources, um, but other impacts, uh, would generally be the same as the proposed project. In addition to the reduced project, we also looked at, uh, redesigned project alternatives, uh, and that included primarily shifting the development envelope locations in certain instances. Uh, for, uh, this option, uh, we looked at, uh, on lots, uh, two and four. Uh, lot two, the envelope would shift from a, where it is proposed adjacent to Gato Creek up onto the coastal bluff and, uh, for lot four, it would be shifted from, uh, the existing cluster of historic buildings, uh, to a less visible, uh, portion of, of the property. Under this alternative, uh, impacts to, uh, visual resources and recreational resources would be reduced, again, by relocating the envelopes on these lots to less visible locations, uh, from both the freeway and the beach. Uh, however, um, uh, and in addition, biological resources would be significantly reduced, uh, from a class one impact, uh, to a class two impact under this alternative, um, by shifting the lot two envelope away from Gato Creek and, uh, the sensitive wildlife that inhabit that, uh, that portion of the creek. Uh, in addition, uh, associated with lot four, um, by shifting the, or relocating the envelope further away from that cluster of historic buildings and providing greater separation, impacts to historic resources, resources, uh, would be significantly reduced under that alternative. A second redesign alternative included, uh, ship a different location for the development envelope on parcel four, as well as a different location for the development envelope on parcel three. The parcel two envelope would be similarly, uh, relocated as, as, uh, as the first option. Uh, in this case, uh, visual impacts would be significantly increased under this alternative relative to the proposed project, uh, because the new location, uh, of the lot three envelope on, would be highly visible from both the freeway and the railroad, uh, in this location, much more so than the proposed project envelope. So that would result, uh, the EIR concluded that would be a, a class one impact on visual Uh, archaeological impacts, however, would be reduced, uh, by shifting that envelope, uh, on lot three to a different location. Uh, recreational impacts would be reduced under this alternative by, uh, pulling the envelope away from Edwards Point on lot two and as well biological resources, as I mentioned, uh, on lot two, by pulling the envelope away from the Gato Creek. Uh, the last alternative that was analyzed, uh, was a, uh, sort of a combination reduced project redesigned project alternative. Uh, and what that did was to, uh, reduce the envelopes on parcels five and three and to relocate the envelopes on parcels two and four. And what that accomplished was, uh, uh, minimizing the impacts, uh, from a biological and visual standpoint, um, by, uh, citing the envelopes in less visible locations, uh, and citing them in less biologically sensitive locations as well. Uh, in addition, archaeological impacts would be reduced with, um, primarily associated with the reduction of the envelope on lot three. Uh, historic resources would be reduced, uh, primarily associated with, uh, shifting the envelope on lot four to a less visible location and further away from the cluster of historic buildings. And, uh, on parcel five, by reducing the envelope in that location, uh, there's, uh, limiting the potential for impacts on the monarch butterfly habitat as well as the wetlands, uh, in, in that vicinity. This alternative, uh, was identified in the EIR as the environmentally superior alternative because of the combination of, uh, impact reductions, uh, that would, it would result. And, uh, it's largely for that reason that this is the alternative that staff is recommending approval as part of the project. Uh, in terms of policy consistency, uh, this project is both in the coastal zone and the inland zone, so, uh, it has policies applicable, uh, both from the coastal land use plan as well as county's comprehensive plan. Uh, so I'm just gonna highlight some of the, the key issues or, or key principles of the project in terms of its consistency with various policies. There's, uh, consistency with bluff edge policies of the coastal land use plan, uh, to avoid bluff erosion and that's associated with, uh, setting back the envelopes on lots one and two. The lot one envelope would be, uh, in its current location is a hundred and fifty feet from, at its closest point from the bluff edge, which is more than double, uh, the typical seventy-five-year, uh, bluff retreat rate that, uh, was, uh, identified for this Uh, from a biological standpoint, uh, as mitigated and, and with, uh, the alternative three C, uh, approval, there'd be buffers and setbacks from environmentally sensitive habitat, including native grasslands, uh, riparian vegetation and wetlands. Uh, most of the, uh, envelopes are located in relatively level areas of the site. Um, south of the highway, it's, it's a generally flat, broad coastal plain. Uh, north of the highway, there's, uh, steeper slopes, uh, to minimize grading on hillsides and slopes. The access to the lot seven and six would use existing ranch roads, um, and the envelopes are cited in, in less steep portions of the site, all less than thirty percent. Uh, the envelopes are also located in, uh, generally open areas of the site in order to minimize, uh, tree removal and, uh, impacts to native vegetation. Uh, there would be temporary removal of riparian vegetation associated with the, uh, span bridge over Gato Creek. Restoration as part of the, uh, mitigated project, uh, would ensure consistency with policies related to, uh, impacts to native vegetation as well as, uh, water quality. Uh, in addition, with the large, uh, envelopes and the large, uh, areas of the site, uh, there would be opportunities for infiltration of surface runoff, uh, to ensure impacts, uh, from water quality perspective and our policies, uh, protecting water quality and, and minimizing erosion would, uh, be, uh, consistent. Uh, we have policies in the coastal land use plan, uh, protecting archaeological resources. The project would be consistent with those by, uh, as, as I mentioned, the site has been designed and, and envelopes redesigned and reduced in size in order to, uh, avoid or minimize impacts to those resources. Uh, in addition, there was, uh, multiple opportunities for, uh, consultation and, uh, interaction with, uh, Native American community, uh, which, uh, again is called for in our policy, uh, when dealing with projects in, in, uh, sensitive resource areas. Uh, from a visual standpoint, policies, uh, protecting visual resources, uh, largely focus on protecting the, the public view corridor of the, uh, coastline, uh, from Highway one oh one and, as well as avoiding, uh, skyline intrusion. And, uh, with the incorporation of the mitigation measures identified in the EIR and the citing of the envelopes, uh, those, uh, resources would be, uh, would be protected and skyline intrusion would be avoided as well as, both from the highway as well as from, uh, the beach and other, uh, public vantage points. We also have policies, uh, related both in our agricultural element as well as in the coastal land use plan, uh, that, uh, provide for the protection of agricultural land. Uh, this project, uh, does not constitute conversion of agricultural land. The agricultural operations would remain in place. Uh, residential development on ag land is, is, uh, a permitted use. It's not considered conversion of ag land. Uh, the EIR concluded, uh, consistent with those policies, that the project would not, uh, diminish the long-term viability of the ag operation. Uh, we also have policies in the coastal land use plan, uh, protecting raptor foraging and nesting habitat and, uh, the mitigation measures and the relocating of the envelopes, uh, as well as the, uh, pre-construction surveys would help to ensure consistent with those policies. Uh, there, as I mentioned, there are various, uh, patches of native grassland scattered throughout the ranch, uh, some of which are located within portions of, of the envelopes. Uh, the mitigation measure that requires, uh, ensuring that, uh, there's a minimum thirty-foot buffer between, uh, edge of development and these native grassland areas, uh, would ensure consistency with, uh, those policies. Uh, from a monarch butterfly perspective, uh, the policies require a fifty-foot setback, uh, from, uh, monarch habitats and, uh, the project as mitigated would be consistent with that as well. We have, uh, also policies, uh, protecting wetland resources requiring a hundred-foot setback, uh, from wetlands. Uh, and the project, uh, largely wetlands are located within, uh, parcel five and, in the area of that development envelope. Um, the mitigation measure requires a hundred-foot setback if any future, uh, new development in that, uh, envelope, uh, from any wetland resources on site. Somehow got skipped here. There we go. Uh, I wanted to, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, highlight some of the policies related to public access, cause I know that's a, a key issue associated with this project. Various policies, both in the coastal act as well as the coastal land use plan and, and the ag element as well, um, speak to, uh, providing public access, but in a manner that's protective of agriculture. Uh, so the project as proposed would provide public access and, and recreational opportunities, um, and in, in working, uh, and proposed by the applicant in a manner that would be, uh, least impactful on the existing app, ag operation. Uh, the applicant, uh, or the application does include, uh, the proposal of both vertical beach access as well as a lateral shoreline easement, uh, which are consistent with county policies. The, uh, lateral easement north of the highway, um, would add to, uh, and provide a segment for the coastal trail and connect with an existing, uh, segment of the coastal trail west of the highway, uh, that would, uh, or sorry, west of the ranch that would ultimately result in a approximately six-mile contiguous section of coastal trail between Las Aras Ranch and Refugio State Park. Uh, the EIR looked at, um, citing a, uh, lateral trail closer to the shoreline and, uh, identified that, uh, there'd be impacts to biological resources as well as, uh, the existing ag operation, uh, which are inconsistent with coastal act policy, uh, three zero two one two, which, uh, provide and encourage recreational access and public access, but, uh, not at the detriment of those resources. Uh, this is a graphic from the EIR looking at the recreational components of the project in the vicinity. Uh, all the sort of red and green trails are, uh, in the larger map show, uh, uh, tri- both existing and proposed trails identified in the, in the county board adopted Parks Recreation and Trails map. And if you zoom into the project site, um, it's, it's a little hard to, uh, to see in, in this graphic, but, uh, what you see again is the, uh, lateral, uh, shoreline easement associated with the project, uh, the vertical easement, uh, associated with the project, which is consistent with the alignment of the, in the board adopted PRT. And then as well, uh, part of the project, the lateral, uh, access on the north side of the freeway. And what you can see is, in relation to the adjacent properties, it, uh, both the, uh, property to the west, uh, which is, uh, leading to the El Capitan Canyon, uh, there's an existing segment of the coastal trail north of the highway that it could connect to. And then to the east of the property, uh, you currently have, um, applications that are, and projects that are in process, most notably, uh, Santa Barbara Ranch or the Naples Project. Uh, and as part of that project, there's a proposal to have, uh, a trail located, uh, starting south of the highway, uh, and providing a, a lookout point, uh, to the beach and then crossing under the freeway to the north side of the highway at Dos Pueblos Creek and then continuing along the north side of the highway, uh, to a point where it, uh, connect with the old segment of Caire Real just east of the property. And then looking at this as a whole, uh, again, with the pro- with the project, providing a trail located along the north side of the highway, it would provide sort of the missing link in between those, uh, both the existing segments west and the proposed segments east. The, uh, coastal act and specifically proposition twenty, um, which was, uh, put to voters in nineteen seventy-two, uh, provided that, uh, trail system shall be established along or near the coast and that ideally the trails, uh, should be consist, uh, continuous and located near the shoreline. Uh, as I, uh, as I pointed out, uh, the trails proposed as part of this project are consistent with the intent of the coastal trail, um, which did not envision, uh, a single uniform alignment along the bluff top, but rather, uh, sort of what's often referred to as a braided network of, of trails that, uh, that provide, uh, a recreational experience, uh, a diverse recreational experience along the coastline. Uh, the board adopted Parks Recreation Trails map, uh, identifies a general trail corridor following the coast, uh, along the entire stretch of Gaviota all the way from, Galieta all the way through Hollister Ranch and beyond. But doesn't, uh, due to its coarseness, uh, and its scale, it's not identifying a specific, um, location or alignment. And so, uh, location of the coastal, uh, trail as part of this project north of the highway, uh, is consistent with that general corridor in terms of following the coastline. And, uh, if, if, uh, if you've visited the site and driven that, uh, section of the trail, it, uh, it is clear that it does offer expansive views of the, of the ocean and, uh, coastal plain, which is, uh, again, consistent with the intent of, of the coastal Uh, as I mentioned, the EIR, uh, did consider alternative locations to the, uh, coastal trail south of the highway. Uh, the EIR concluded that those alternative locations would be infeasible, uh, due to conflicts with the existing ag operation, as well as, uh, the presence of the railroad, uh, that would, uh, need to be crossed, uh, in certain, um, scenarios, or the multiple drainages, uh, that flow north-south through the property that would need to be crossed as well, uh, south of the highway. And for that reason, due to its determination of infeasibility, those, uh, alternatives weren't further analyzed. In terms of ordinance compliance, um, the project, uh, would comply with applicable requirements, uh, both from Article Two, uh, as well as the County Land Use Development Code, uh, and Chapter Twenty-One, which are, are subdivision regulations. The, uh, middle parcels in between the railroad and, uh, highway would all meet minimum parcel size requirements as part of the tenet parcel map, uh, consistent with Chapter Twenty-One. Uh, all the improvements proposed as part of this project as well as future development, those are all permitted uses within the Ag Two One Hundred Zone District. Uh, in terms of the lot line adjustment, the three parcels, uh, along the ocean, uh, south of the railroad tracks, they're currently all below minimum parcel size requirement, which, um, would be a hundred-acre zoning. Uh, you have three parcels, one's eight acres, one's eleven acres and one's ninety-four acres. And the lot line adjustment, uh, requirements have an ordinance in Chapter Twenty-One. And the lot line adjustment requirements of ordinance in Chapter 21 allow parcels to be created through a lot line adjustment and result in being below minimum parcel size as long as they were below minimum parcel size starting out. One of the requirements for that is to ensure that you're not increasing the number of developable lots as part of a lot line adjustment if they are below minimum parcel size. And as part of this project, we looked at the existing developability of those three substandard lots, concluded that two of the lots were developable. The 11-acre lot is a long skinny lot sandwiched in between the railroad and the beach with no room to develop a home in that location. But the other two are large enough and services could be provided to demonstrate that they are developable. And as part of this application, as I mentioned, that middle lot, the 94-acre lot, which was illegally created, would be obtaining a conditional certificate of compliance, which would legalize that lot as part of this process. The inland parcels north of the highway that are also part of the other lot line adjustment application, both of those would meet minimum parcel size requirements and are consistent with the lot line adjustment findings. As I mentioned too, the inland parcels would, or portions of the inland parcels would be rezoned to Ag 2100 from ordinance 661, which would be consistent with our land use development code and their existing land use designations. And a water system, shared water system is a permitted use in the Ag 2 Zone District with a minor CUP, which is part of the application package as well before you. So concluding, staff's recommendations are that you, because this project, backing up for a second, because this project does include a rezone, the whole package of applications are being forwarded to the board supervisors for their ultimate approval. So your actions here would be in a recommending manner. So staff's recommendations are that you recommend that the board make the required findings for approval, including the SEQA findings, that you recommend the board certify the EIR and adopt the mitigation monitoring program, recommend that the board approve the amendment to the zoning map to rezone the parcels or portions of parcels from unlimited agriculture to Ag 2100, and recommend that the board approve the modified project, Alternative 3C, subject to the conditions of approval. Yeah, that concludes staff's presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. Do we have initial questions, Bernie, among commissioners? I do want to take a break, a five-minute break, as soon as we finish commissioner questions and then have the applicant's presentation and hopefully before we take a lunch break, enough time for anyone to testify that can't this afternoon. So let's try and hit the highlights of our questions. This is certainly not the last chance for questions, just the first, but Commissioner Blau has one right now.
I just had one question. That was the, for the vertical access, we had to get an easement from the railroad. And I'm making the assumption that we could either lend powers of eminent domain or use powers of eminent domain to get that easement if it was necessary. I read some, in reading through the documents, that was an issue that one of the law firms raised. I just want to make sure that we could get that since it's for public use to get access to the beach. I have a question for council.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blau, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head, so I'll take a look at that and I'll come back on that.
Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. I think Commissioner Brooks actually was before me. Okay. I'm looking at the, in the EIR analysis about ag resources, because the ag viability is very important in this project. And we had discussed this on the phone yesterday, and perhaps could you explain a little bit more? I have concerns about the use of the CCNRs and as a mitigation measure, whether CCNRs are going to be strong enough, since I, from what I understand, the county can't enforce them. Could you explain or elaborate on how the CCNRs will make sure that the, you know, the land will stay in agriculture? According to the plan, I think it's, the CCNRs would stay in effect for 50 years, but I'm just concerned about the enforceability of those.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brooks. The applicant has identified or proposed CCNRs as part of their project. And they have proposed that for not, for at least 50 years, those CCNRs would not be substantially amended or eliminated as sort of an assurance that the intent, the current intent of the owners would be, would remain for multiple generations, stopping short of a permanent type of easement solution. The EIR does identify, I believe it's about five mitigation measures that make reference to the CCNRs, essentially including measures that would be incorporated into the CCNRs to fulfill and implement those conditions or those mitigation measures. After discussions with you and discussions among staff, our position is that those conditions and mitigation measures that are in the EIR and make reference to or incorporate those languages into, that language into the CCNRs would be, remain in full force and effect regardless of the outcome of the CCNRs in the future. They'd be conditions of approval of the project or projects and therefore would remain valid. We have proposed some additional language to insert at the bottom of each of those applicable conditions to speak to that point.
Another question on, with, I believe it's parcel six that we're creating. Do we as a body, do we have the power to select the development envelope? Or, there's three of them, I believe it's parcel six. And I believe in your presentation, you said at some future point that would be done. Would we be able to look at that closely during this part of the process and make a decision? Or it does that in fact, will that be up to the owner at the time?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, you have the discretion to select one of those three building sites? Or you could leave it up to a future owner to have that choice? It's really your discretion or the board's discretion how you want to proceed with that. The EIR looked at the potential for any of those three sites to be developed, but if there's a preference for confining that to just one of those, that's certainly within your jurisdiction to do so.
Okay. Back to agricultural resources. It looks like, you know, if the CCNRs can hold for the grazing operation, why or can we, why would the orchards not also be put under like one entity? Is that within our jurisdiction again to, right now, I think according to the project, it would just be the grazing operation that would continue and that's what the CCNRs cover? Although the orchards though would be up to the individual owners? Is there any way that that can be more closely addressed by our body at this point during this process?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brooks, the applicant proposed those elements of the CCNRs, which are that the CCNRs would incorporate a requirement that the grazing operation continue to be collectively managed, but the individual lots would have more control or sole control over the orchards, with the idea that individual owner might have a preference of a different crop type over avocado or lemons, which are the current orchards in place today. So it would give those owners flexibility in changing out a crop. Or if it was determined in the future that the crops weren't working, weren't financially working for them, they'd have the ability to say, remove the crops and pull that land into the orchard or into the grazing operation. So essentially not tying their hands in that regard. If your commission wanted to modify that language so that the orchards would be collectively managed as well, I believe you'd have the discretion to do so if you could support it with substantial evidence that doing so would be necessary to ensure impacts of the ag operation would be minimized.
You know, I've been looking at, you showed the maps as far as making sure that we have, you know, policy consistency. And when I look at the map, if you want to put it on now, it's just a general question for now. I'm sure we'll be discussing it in great detail. You know, in the Parks Rec and Trail Map 4.101 that you had shown above, and I have the larger version of that, so I'm looking at the trails, the county trail map, and it does show a trail that goes, this is in the EIR, it's the one I'm looking at, because it's in color and it's larger. It shows a bluff top, just says big circles. And you mentioned that, well, it was just kind of a broad swath. I guess my question is, you know, wouldn't that need to be taken into consideration, you know, as one of the policies that are in existence? Because it is indicated along the shoreline, you know, above, on the bluff top. So just explain to me a little bit more, you know, how it was decided that that particular graph, you know, would not have to be looked at more closely to get this consistency?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brooks, as I mentioned, the scale on that particular PRT map that covers this portion of the county is about one inch equals 8,000 feet. So these, if you look on the official PRT map, those circles are quite large and they just generally follow the coastline. But if you were, and they do so all the way from, like I said, Galida out to Hollister and beyond. County's position that that represents, again, a general trail corridor, not a specific alignment that needs to be along the bluff top itself. There's many instances along the coastline within the PRT map area where a trail along the bluff top would be impossible. And so, to be consistent with the PRT map, don't believe that a trail along the bluff top itself is required, but rather a trail that follows the coastline and follows that general alignment or that general trail corridor would be consistent. The alignment in the, again, in the PRT map is very coarse, it's very rough and not meant to be a specific, exact, with exactness.
Excuse me, Commissioner Brooks, let's take a five-minute break. I realize you're going to have a few more, and Commissioner Brown has yet to question. So we'll be back at 25 after. As soon as, as our staff returns, we will get started here so that we can get as many people to speak as possible for the lunch hour. This is the 18th of January 2012, Santa Barbara County Planning Commission. And we were at the point where commissioners were asking questions following staff presentation. The applicant presentation will follow this. Commissioner Brooks?
I am finished with my questions.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Brown?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tuttle, would you describe the ownership and how it's related to the three applications? Or if it's different or the same?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I think the applicant might be in a better position to explain exactly the ownership breakdown, but what I can tell you in relation to the applications is that the reason there are three separate applications, two lot line adjustments and one tenet parcel map is because of the intervening fees of the railroad and the highway. You can't have a single application covering all those parcels because of those intervening fee ownerships.
So what you're telling me is there's two separate ownerships, the railroad divides, that north of the railroad is one?
It's just the fact that the railroad itself is held, is owned separately, and the highway is owned by the state.
Oh, okay.
So that breaks up the ownership of the ranch into three separate.
And then the piece north of the freeway is owned separately?
Well, it's not necessarily that it's owned separately, it's just because you have the highway that separates the ownership. You can't have a lot line adjustment crossing the highway or subdivision crossing the highway in that case. So that's why it's broken into different applications.
Lot four. The proposal is one of the alternatives, and I was questioning the visual simulation, which is on page 4.1-24. It appears to me, and maybe I'm not looking at the right document, that the visual sim shows the proposed structure near the historic barns. But on the map, you showed us as it being somewhat removed. Would you?
Mr. Sure, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, the visual simulation you're referring to, which is figure 4.1-7.
Right.
That's the simulation of the applicant's proposal, which is to have the envelope surround that, those existing structures.
Okay, all right. And I think, is there a size restriction on, somewhere in the document about the size of the homes?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, there is no specific size limitation. It would be, the language is more a compatibility issue. It would be up to review by architectural historian to determine whether, you know, whatever size is proposed to be compatible with existing.
But that would be for lot four if it's on one of the other lots?
It'd be for all of the coastal lots.
Okay. And the crossing, the proposed crossing from the coastal trail, which is planned north of the freeway, to the access to that parking lot on the south freeway, what is, how does one access?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, one does not access. There is no connection between the lateral trail and the vertical trail.
So the trail on the southern side, it would just be for people who drove to that area and parked in the parking lot, or hiked along or biked, I guess, along the freeway?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, correct. It would be for vehicles or for bicyclists biking along the freeway. Now, there is a potential in the future for, where the parking area is located is at the end of a frontage road that connects Las Vegas Ranch with Dos Pueblos Ranch. And there is the potential in the future that that segment of that frontage road could become a public access route as well, which would then provide a connection point with, along the south side of the freeway with Las Vegas Ranch and Dos Pueblos Ranch. But, you know, its outcome at this point is uncertain.
Let me just go back to the lot four. So staff's proposal for the Alternative 3C, which moved the building envelope So staff's proposal for the alternative 3C, which moved the building envelope into a different location. Is there any photo sim of that? No.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, there's no photo simulation. What there is is sort of a modeled view that's in the appendices of the EIR that looks at what the relocated envelope would look like from the highway.
So it's in the CD-ROM that we got? That's the appendices?
Correct.
Okay. All right, okay, thank you.
Any other questions at this point before we move to the applicant? Doesn't appear so, so let's turn to the applicant, Ms. Petrovich. We discussed a 20-minute timeframe for your initial presentation. Do you have others besides yourself who are speaking?
No, I am it, Mr. Chair. And Alex, could you put up on my presentation? While he's doing that, I'm Susan Petrovich of Brownstein Hyatt Farber Shrek, representative of the applicant. This PowerPoint is mostly photographs, so I'll move quickly. The project speaks for itself. It's a beautiful working ranch, and the Dohenys want to keep it that way. You're looking at the single ranch entrance. Oh, I didn't, oh, thanks. Oh, this doesn't work. Oh, oh, thanks, okay. I'll give you a quick perspective. This is the historic structures that we were just discussing and the grazing pastures. Next is the view from the coastal terrace looking toward the mountains. Next is another group of photographs showing various perspectives of the grazing land. Then the orchards, they are lemons and avocados. Here's another group of views of the orchards, and in the background you'll see one of the monarch butterfly habitats in that upper left-hand photo. And this is beautiful Gato Canyon. This is one, this canyon is one of the objectives, preserving it is one of the objectives of the Dohenys in this project by creating one large parcel that would encompass the canyon and would have no houses in it. The Dohini family purchased the ranches, one in 1967 and one in 1969, and have operated them as a combined viable agricultural enterprise ever since. Tim Dohini dreamed of keeping these ranches together, but he knew that when he and his wife died, the existing parcels could be sold off. He loved the ranch and built his home there, raised his children there, part of their life, and he was an avid cowboy. But as we all know, estate taxes all too often force divestment of family ranches. The parent's death also can deprive the children of the opportunity to live on and work the land. With this project, each child who wants to live on the property can have a home on a separate parcel. Also, because of estate taxes, it's important to situate one parcel for sale to pay the taxes so you can save the integrity of the rest of the ranch. The Doheny's solution was this project, to retain the long-term viability of agriculture by allowing for reasonable residential development on limited building sites so you wouldn't have the mega mansion effect. Offer trails to the public, but control public access so that people's presence would not impair the agricultural operation and damage the resources, and, as I said, keep Upper Gato Canyon intact. Many trail users are respectful, and they cause no intentional damage, but so many people are ignorant of agriculture that they can cause unintentional damage. We've given two examples here of tracking root rot spores into an orchard, but an increasing concern now is fecal contamination in any food crops, including orchards. Trash is a constant problem on public trails. If a calf swallows a plastic bag, for instance, that is lethal. There's no way to save the animal. Other trail users aren't so respectful, and no one can police them in rural areas. It's not a fair burden to impose upon an agricultural operator, and frankly, it's just impossible. Also, cows with calves become distressed by the proximity of people and their dogs. These are not, these range cattle are not domesticated completely. They are semi-wild. People on foot are potential predators to them, and all dogs, they see the same as they see coyotes, as a threat. Frightened calves will run into barbed wire fences, they'll actually run through barbed wire fences, getting between the strands and becoming isolated from their mothers. People use trails as access to steal fruit and equipment, to vandalize, or just to wander around private property. You'd be amazed how many people don't stay on the trails if they can find a way around the fencing. The trails and the fencing are designed to accommodate a wide range of people, and that's why we are adamant that the fencing be determined by the landowner, not by planning and development. The vertical trail to the beach is a long hike, there's no question. You're not going to see a lot of strollers. But the parking lot and the trails provide a beach access where presently there just isn't any. And the east-west access on the north side of the freeway provides a terrific opportunity to people who are camping either at El Capitan Canyon or at the state beach, and even at Refugio, because so many of them do bring their bikes. And this is a great addition to those two camping areas by allowing them to take off to the east, and it's a wide enough trail that it's available for multiple uses, which of course is one of the major goals of the coastal trail. The beach trail opens up a two-mile stretch of coastline for use without trespassing, and the Gabpack Trails Subcommittee supports these trails. This is the vertical beach access trail. The upper left is the tunnel under the railroad tracks. To the photo to the right that says Culvert is actually where the tunnel comes out from under the railroad tracks to the beach. And the lower photograph is the road that is presently an ag road, but ultimately will be dedicated to trail use, and this is looking from the parking lot as you walk toward the beach and the tunnel. The beach trail provides a sandy beach even at high tide, and that's true along its entire route. There are a few times during the winter when you have an extremely high tide, and, for instance, these photos were taken in January, two hours after high tide. You can see there's still sandy beach to walk on, and when we went out with the representatives of the trails groups, it was a plus-five high tide last week, and in isolated spots where there was sand missing completely, there were cobbles that provided footing above the waterline. To further ensure the agricultural viability of the ranches, the Dohenys planted the west avocado orchard to increase the ranch income. They are one of the few ranchers who have ever purchased a new two-inch agricultural irrigation meter from Galida Water District at great expense, but they really felt it was important to ensure that they had adequate irrigation water. This is not potable water, it can't be used for houses, it is just irrigation water. So the orchard is thriving, and the ranch is a paying operation, thanks to the able management of Paul Van Leer, who's been there a very long time and has lived in this area his entire life. He rotates the cattle to avoid overgrazing and to take advantage of the various microclimates that the ranch provides. And he oversees the orchard picking and pruning, which you can see here in process. And in the next slide, you see the ag access road that was considered for possible trail use and rejected. As you can see, it isn't wide enough for anything other than ag, equipment, and vehicles. And if you were to put a trail here, you would be taking people through the heart of the operation. That's not practical in a working ranch. I wanted to hit, just for you, for those of you who haven't been there, and even for those of you who have, some of the ranch's undisturbed beauty, because it really is an incredible place, and they want to keep it that way. Here's a close-up of a very angry cow. Just to give you an example, even with a telephoto lens, the photographer who was on foot was too close, and the cow is upset, and she's sounding a warning. Under state and county policies, the trail objectives require balancing, balancing of the objective of maximizing public access without damaging natural resources, agricultural operations, and owner privacy. The Coastal Act calls for maximizing public access to and along the coast and public recreational opportunities in the coastal zone, but, and this is a big but, it has to be consistent with sound resources conservation and private property owners' rights. The Coastal Act also says that public access, or provides for public access from the nearest public roadway to the shoreline and along the coast, consistent with protection of fragile coastal resources. We believe the beach trail does satisfy the PRT map's requirement of a trail right along the coastline. You have to also, under the Coastal Act, assure that non-agricultural development, that includes trails, doesn't impair agricultural viability. And then you have SB 908. This was a statute for the funding and impetus for the coastal trail itself, and it says that the coastal trail shall be developed in a manner that demonstrates respect for property, rights, and privacy, privacy of owners. And then our letter goes into much more detail about the case law, but there were two principles that I thought should be addressed because of this claim that people have been using the west end of the property, and that therefore it should be regarded as somehow a public domain. The recent case held that long-term beach use, and this was very long-term beach use, by groups of people rarely larger than 15, who use it precisely because it's isolated and lightly used, does not constitute a public recreational area. And then there are older cases that are very clear that there must be rough proportionality between the easement exacted and the burden of the project on recreational resources. And I would submit to you that this project does not place a burden on the area's recreational resources. To the contrary, it actually improves them. Mr. and Mrs. Dohini planned these trails as a legacy to the public, not because they felt the county had a right to exact them, but foremost in their minds was still the protection of the agricultural integrity of this land so it could remain in agriculture in the distant future. You've seen photos of the beach access trail and of the beach trail itself. These show the northerly trail that we think can be multi-use. And we'll start from the west, that is, from the El Capitan area. The bottom photo gives you an idea of why we think this would be a great multi-use trail. This used to be the route of Calle Real, so it's wide, it's level, and it's now privately owned, but they are willing to dedicate it. And then to the right, you can see, you're at freeway level here, but you're looking across the freeway. The freeway does not impair this beautiful view of the coastal plain of the ocean, the islands. So you've still got the trail experience, and you're in the middle of agricultural land. This is where the Gato Bridge would go. And from the applicant's perspective, even though it would be difficult, the trail could be installed up to this point with fencing going in until the pedestrian's bridge is put in, if that's the county's choice, or the county can just wait and not open the trail on this property until after the Gato Bridge goes in. It's really just a matter of kind of extending the westerly trail even further to the east. This is on the other side of Gato, walking through agricultural land. You can see that it's beautiful views, the deer on the right, the middle right-hand photograph, and in the bottom photograph, the incredible views up the coast, and of course, if the camera turned around, down the coast, of the ocean and the mountains both. This is more the view from that trail, amazing island and ocean views. And then this is the east end of the trail, where it ends at the orchards. But the project opponents aren't satisfied. They say another trail is technically feasible, so we walked it with them. And they're right, it probably is technically feasible. That means someone could build it, but it would require ignoring the lack of compatibility with agriculture and with natural resources. It would actually require hacking, switchbacks through dense coastal sage scrub, up and down steep slopes, installing a bridge that would be between 30 and 60 feet wide, depending on where you put it, in the middle of a dense monarch butterfly habitat, crossing streams with threatened and endangered species habitat, and at what cost to the environment and what potential damage by the public when they were using it. They want a public trail that crosses through the pastures and creeks, crosses the railroad tracks in two places, uses existing ranch roads, and crosses the coastal terrace right in front of Mrs. Dohini's front yard and in front of the building sites for Parcels One and Two. People and their dogs can be incredibly destructive when they use a trail. Dogs love to chase both wild animals and cattle, and that's a very big consideration in citing these trails. This is the route starting, sorry, this time from east to west, so starting from the Dos Pueblos end, of the opponent's proposed coastal trail. Where the train, the picture of the train is where they show a crossing of the railroad tracks, the trail coming from the beach up and over the railroad tracks, exactly where you see the train. As you can see, that's an incredibly steep slope and a drop-off, and it's on neighboring property, not on Las Vegas. The right one, the right photograph shows, and in the right part of that photograph is the existing orchard road, that's the only access road serving the south part of this orchard, and that slope you're looking at is the railroad's fill slope for the tracks. So right where that line of trees is, is where the tracks are, and you would have to cut in that side, make a side cut into that slope in order for the trail to go there. Or you'd have to take out part of the orchard in order for the trail to go where the road is. And then you would be climbing up this steep, dense coastal sage scrub area into the calving pasture on the terrace of Parcel Five, which is right here. That's Mrs., the corner of Mrs. Dohini's house on the right. You continue through that pasture, and here you are at the butterfly habitat, which is just west of her home, and that is an incredibly dense eucalyptus grove. This is where you'd have to install the long bridge. They want to close, they want to cross the railroad tracks twice. Here's the first crossing, and here's the second crossing, and just after the second crossing, you would have to go through another dense eucalyptus grove. Moving on, you would be, you would have to cross Gato Creek. This is pristine habitat. The only other crossing is at the mouth of the creek. That's red-legged frog habitat and has sensitive plant species, and it's a very, very narrow trail. It's no more than a footpath. In fact, you have to scramble up a rock face from the beach even to get to the trail or wade through the lagoon. And then at the west end of the property, you have a very large wetland habitat. It's in a bowl shape, it's, you would have to get through it in order to get across the property to this point, which represents the very west end of the property. In the right-hand photo, that pile of dark material is the Caltrans storage yard, which they use for the freeway. So you'd be crossing right through the Caltrans borrow pit slash storage yard, and you would come out on the freeway off-ramp at El Capitan Ranch, or on-ramp, I'm sorry, it'd be the southbound on-ramp. I guess they propose to park, have people park there, which makes no sense to me. Finally, we thought you might want to take a look at the development envelopes. Development envelope number one, this is as originally proposed, and it is consistent with alternative 3C, which is the environmentally superior alternative. As you can see, completely level. Envelope number two, also consistent with alternative 3C on the left, that's the upper terrace where the staff proposes to put the residents. And on the, in the lower right-hand photograph is where we propose the cabana be placed. We feel strongly that if the property owner is going to so significantly locate their house away from the ocean so that the public can enjoy the experience of being on the beach, that the least we can do is allow them to have a cabana so they can enjoy the beach area. The cabana is still several hundred feet away from the ocean, incidentally. Envelope number three, this is its location, and this is its reduced size to eliminate the cultural impact. Number four is consistent, also consistent with the environmentally superior alternative. As you can see by the lower photograph, it's hidden behind a knoll. We've agreed to the height limit, so you will not be able to see that from the freeway or the railroad. Number five is the existing house. On the left, you can see the house, the ocean is actually to the right off this photo. So the house is on an east-west access, axis looking out at the ocean for maximum enjoyment of the ocean views. If you require that the only way to enlarge this very modest home is to add footage to the south, as the staff suggests in the, in option 3C, then you obliterate the ocean view from the existing house and defeat the purpose of the east-west access. And since there are no two stories allowed, we're fine with that. We feel that that's just unreasonable and unfair, it's punitive, and it just deprives the owner of being able to enjoy their ocean view. And finally, there are development envelopes six and seven, again, as originally proposed and consistent with. and consistent with alternative 3C. So in conclusion, the Dohenys plan carefully to preserve these ranches. Their project respects natural resources and historical and cultural resources. The development envelope sites are limited in size, carefully chosen, and tweaked for visual and cultural protection. The Dohenys never had any plans to build on these lots, so we designated these envelopes because it was required for the environmental review and because the Dohenys wanted to make sure that the residential sites, when they were built, would be carefully planned. Approval of this project freezes the ranch in time. What you see today, excuse me, from Highway 101 is what you will see for decades. The opponent's trail proposal ignores horrific impacts to natural resources and agriculture and violates the mandate of the Coastal Act that private property rights be respected and agriculture be preserved and protected. It also ignores the county's ag element. The coastal trail is a promise for future generations. It is a long-term project, but wherever possible, the mandate is to work with private property owners to try to add links to a very long chain. Without this project, the public could wait for decades for any trail access to this land, let alone three trails. The project provides incredibly diverse links along the coast and to the beach, all within sight, sound, and smell of the ocean. And contrary to comments made by people about the trail north of the freeway, it isn't noisy. It is peaceful, quiet, and has majestic views in an agrarian setting. Someday, Santa Barbara and Dos Pueblos ranches will be developed, and you will have that easterly link. And again, I want to emphasize that the GAVPAC Trail Subcommittee supports these trails. We think staff did a great job, but we have a few disagreements. We listed them in our letter, but there were a couple that I wanted to talk about quickly. Parcel two's development envelope, as I mentioned, we would like a modest 800-square-foot maximum cabana in the lower, with no toilet, so that they can have a place, they can store their stuff and, you know, have their food and otherwise enjoy the ocean themselves. And as Dr. Thompson of Cardinal Entrick has explained in her letter, that cabana, if it's sited as she describes, would not only be compatible with the environment, but it would provide emergency access to Edward's Point. Second, please don't require PND approval of landscape plans. The BAR already covers that. You don't require it of other applicants. It's time-consuming and expensive, and it doesn't accomplish the goal of preventing invasive species. We believe our proposal, that there should simply be a condition that requires that no plants at any time, regardless of whether it's when you first get your landscape plan approved, no plants that appear on the ag commissioner's list of noxious and invasive plants be planted in the building envelopes. Third, the ag fencing requirements discussed in detail in our letter are absolutely essential. The Dohenys cannot offer these trails if they aren't adequately fenced to keep people and dogs out of the orchards and away from the cattle. And finally, we disagree that having a smaller development envelope is a good idea. It's a bad idea because it limits flexibility in moving the two-acre building site around to match a residence design to the site and to address visual and biological impacts. Restricting the parcel five development envelope, when there are so many conditions imposed to avoid sensitive areas, is simply unreasonable. It also deprives the owner of their view shed if they want to add a wing onto the existing house, and that's just unreasonable and unfair. There's plenty of room for carefully designed addition that won't impact resources. So we ask you to approve the project with the changes requested by the applicant. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Doing.
Sorry, can I get water?
Just on that last point, are you asking for all of the building envelopes to be flexible in location?
Yes, we are. We understand, we agree with the environmentally superior alternative as to parcel two, with the cabana exception. So we agree with that envelope because we believe there's a legitimate reason for it to be slightly smaller and to be up on the terrace.
But as to the other envelopes, you're asking that those not be set in advance that at the time, sometime in the future, the owner could move the two acres around on the lot?
No, they could only move them around within the building envelope. So the building envelopes that we proposed were really intended to be a large footprint within which you had to have contiguous two acres. So that depending on your house design, you would choose the place, and of course, depending on the BAR's approval and all the other permitting conditions and sensitive resources, you would still be confined to no more than two acres. You might end up with less than two acres, depending on the resources.
Okay.
And we understand that. We wanted, the two acres was chosen because we wanted to be sure that the parcels that were all 100 acres or more would qualify for the Williamson Act.
Okay, Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. Ms. Petrovich, there are now trespassers on the property. In fact, when we did a site visit, there was one down at Edward's Point, and we waved to him, and that was... So how, you've indicated that this, it's very difficult to get there because of the terrain and other issues, but somehow they seem to get there down to Edward's Point.
They do. They come down, they walk on the railroad tracks, which of course is a very unsafe condition. So our thought was by giving them a safe access from the...
Right. Right. So they don't act, they don't go through the...
No, they don't wander through the wetland. No, and frankly, if people are found wandering around, because obviously, we know when the large swells are, everybody in the county who's paying attention knows when the large swells are. So the ranch folks, keep an eye on them. And if they find people just randomly wandering around, they will escort them off the property.
It was characterized, me, by the people I met with last week, some of the trail folks, that it's just not only surfers who access. This one guy we saw down there was, I guess he was just a hiker, I'm not really sure, but there were some fishermen down there, and there's other people other than surfers who use the property.
Well, if they are wandering around hiking and they get caught, they're escorted off.
Well, that was not the case when I was... Anyway, can you explain, I'm a little confused here about parcel two. That's the owner's current house?
No, that's parcel five. Parcel two's one of the two coastal parcels.
Okay. No, sorry. Right, so parcel five is the current owner's house.
That's the Dohini home.
Okay. And we, there is no, this is for Alex, no photo sim of that, because it's existing dwelling...
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, yeah, there's no photo sim of that, both because it's existing, but also it's minimally visible. It's not visible from the freeway. There's only a short section from the railroad tracks that it's visible.
Okay.
And you can't see it from the beach because the beach is at such a low level, low elevation compared to it.
And I guess the last question I have is...
For the applicant?
Yes, for the applicant.
Okay.
You know, you've indicated about the proposed trail, and you've provided information that the beach is accessible even at high tide. My question is, is there a requirement to provide trail access 24 hours? In other words, that, I realize, I think one of the conditions is that it be sunset to sunrise.
Yeah, we, what we want to do is close the parking lot after dusk because that's when poachers love to come in and clean you out. And they will, they'll take all night to get over the fences, and they are amazingly efficient.
Okay. But there's no requirement, or is there a requirement perhaps in the Coastal Act, maybe staff needs to answer that, but there be trail access 24 hours?
No, there's no requirement.
All right.
And in many areas, especially next to ag properties, you just can't do that.
Good, thank you.
Does anyone have any other questions?
I would like to know if your law firm has any larger type than the ones you use for these briefs. I think that's it for now.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will, we'll jump to public comment in order to accommodate a couple of speakers who have indicated they can't stay. Now, our plan is to have a relatively brief break for lunch, so nobody should go too far, and we'll try and continue the hearing very soon after. But we do want to get everybody that has shown up today to help us with this project. And I do have two speakers that have indicated they need to leave, so I'll call on them. Stan Georgie, followed by Tyke Manetti. Mr. Manetti, if you can kind of get in a position to follow, that would be helpful.
Good afternoon. Thank you for accommodating my time schedule. My name is Stan Georgie, and I grow lemons at the intersection of Hollister Avenue and Ward Drive. Many of you probably recognize me because I was here during the Eastern Galeta Valley update, speaking several times. And even though I want to continue those discussions with you, I'm actually here to speak on the applicant's behalf in our experiences of dealing with having an orchard in an unfenced environment and how we deal, what issues we have with the public. Since I'm under the impression that part of the proposal before you today can include a designation of a public trail in and around the agriculture areas of this property, with that in mind, I will lay out personal experiences, as I said, without fencing. First, I will say that times are different now than when my great-grandfather farmed our land. There was a much higher level of respect for private property, and trespass was not such a big issue as it is now. First item that we deal with is the trash accumulation in and around the orchard from trespassers. It's not uncommon for us on an annual basis to remove about 1,500 pounds of garbage every year. Not only does this take a significant amount of man-hours, but it is easily the most disgusting work that we perform. It is useless work that poses a health hazard to myself and our employees. The next item that we deal with is vandalism. We often have irrigation pipes that get broken, wind machines have parts stolen off of them, tree limbs get broken, and sticks are used to damage fruit. This past year alone, we had two water filter stations and two wind machines damaged, all at a cost around $2,500 for all time materials. Next, we have theft. Yes, believe it or not, people do steal lemons, sometimes even by the grocery bag. It's interesting, when I've confronted people in this scenario, they act as if they're entitled to that fruit, or even surprised that the property is privately owned. As well as fruit theft, we have vehicle batteries stolen, tractor parts, or any other metal item that could be worth selling. And lastly, and probably most importantly, is the current top topic of food safety in most producing agricultural operations. I'm not here to debate the details of the program for food safety, but merely point out that a large component of a food safety program has to do with food security. As growers, we are faced now with excluding all unauthorized contact with crops in the field. This means securing the property lines, which ultimately means fencing of some sort. To be effective, this fencing has to exclude anyone from getting in at any spot along the fence line and possibly having contact with the crops grown in the field. Knowing what I have experienced, I hope that you seriously consider the ramifications of having an unfenced public trail included in this proposal. I know they want to have it included, but as a property owner, I cringe at the thought of ever having a public trail that is near or adjacent to any of the acreage that I farm. I understand that most people would never pose a problem to the owners, but unfortunately, it is always the few that ruin it for the rest. With that in mind, please listen to the owners and protect what rights they have to protect their own property, or you may never be able to extract a public trail from a property owner again without a fierce legal battle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Georgie. Mr. Manetti? Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and rest of board members. I'm Tyke Manetti from the North County, and I've been in the ranching and farming business for over 50 years. We have a similar situation at Point Sal, where we have a trail that's supposed to go to the beach. One person goes to the beach, and two of them go through the ranch where they're not supposed to be and disturb the cattle and deposit their trash and water bottles, and it's a mess of what's up there. And I talked to Joni and Joe Centeno before they pushed to get it open about that, knew the county was strapped for finances, and we don't, I asked if you do open it, please give us some sheriff protection. So that's where I'm coming from. But I think the public is very fortunate with the Dohini family, being as generous as they are to donate their land and access to the beach. Looks, what I saw, Paul showed me around a little bit, and looked like it was very nice to get to the beach, and they have a trail along the beach. I don't see what the trail on the bluff through the middle of the agriculture is going to benefit. And I'd like to ask anybody that is pushing for that trail, you saw the picture of Mr. Dohini's house there, if they have property and a nice house, if they would like to have a public trail through their front yard, I don't think it's feasible, being that they have the trail on the beach and the one above the freeway, I think that's adequate. And I think your recommendations to the Board of Supervisors to, that they have the other access is, you know, is plenty. And that's all I have to say. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I don't think we have questions, but we do appreciate you coming in to help us with this project.
Thank you.
Was there anyone else that absolutely can't come back in 20 minutes? Yes, sir?
May I speak, Ben?
Sure. You have filled out a speaker slip?
Yes.
And you can tell us when you get to the mic what your name is. I'll pull it out.
Chairman Cooney and members of the Commission, my name is Bob Keats, and I'm a member of the Santa Barbara chapter of the Surf Rider Foundation. The Gaviota Coast contains the last significant stretch of undeveloped, unprotected rural coastal land in Southern California. And the Las Vegas Project, while ostensibly about a lotline adjustment, is essentially about the future of the Gaviota Coast. Will the Gaviota Coast fulfill its potential for agricultural production, or will it become an enclave of wealthy estate owners with boutique agricultural operations? The cumulative impacts of the estates that have been proposed for Las Vegas, for Santa Barbara Ranch, and for Macar will result in a significant and unmitigable alteration of the character of the Gaviota Coast and of the use of the Gaviota Coast. This mansionization of the Gaviota Coast will cause permanent degradation from which the region will never recover. Although the proposed lotline adjustment for Las Vegas would create seven parcels, each parcel could potentially contain three residences, a main residence, a guest house, and a farmworker house. This means that the total potential development for this property is 21 houses with ancillary buildings. That much development would create a significant and unmitigable adverse visual impact. In addition, Section 30251 of the California Coastal Act states that, quote, "The scenic and visual qualities of coastal areas shall be considered and protected as a resource of public importance," unquote. 21 residences on this property would be inconsistent with that policy. Furthermore, the project is inconsistent with the county's general plan and development code. Two of the proposed parcels are below the 100-acre minimum size for the zone designation, and the project would convert 16 acres of agricultural soils, including seven acres of prime ag soils. Coastal Act Policy 30241 states that, quote, "The maximum amount of prime agricultural land shall be maintained in agricultural production." The project is clearly inconsistent with this policy. According to a letter from the California Coastal Commission that is included in the EIR, the conversion of any prime soils to residential use is not consistent with the certified local coastal plan. In addition, LUP Policy 8-4 requires that the county make a finding that the long-term agricultural productivity of the property will not be diminished, but the proposed CCNRs are good for only 50 years, and it is unlikely that future owners of these estates will want the dust and odors of a cattle operation outside the front doors of their homes. Furthermore, the project is inconsistent with Coastal Act Policy 30211 and CLUP Policies 7-1 and 7-3 regarding the protection of public access to the beach. 7-1 and 7-3 regarding the protection of public access to the beach. The project would result in the loss of the current and historically established public access to Edwards Point, with no guarantee that the easements and the funding for construction of a new vertical access trail will ever be acquired.
Mr. Keats, are you about to wrap up?
Yes.
Thank you.
In addition, the project does not provide a lateral access easement along the shoreline above the high tide as required by Policy 7-3. Altogether, your decision on this project is not simply about a lotline adjustment. It is a choice about a project that will set a precedent for other large agricultural parcels. It is about cumulative impacts that will alter the character of the Gaviota Coast, that will change the landscape of the Gaviota Coast, and that will mar the beauty of the Gaviota Coast. Will the future of the Gaviota Coast be one in which the region continues to have substantial active agricultural production, or will it become a region of private estates for the very wealthy? That is the real choice. And in closing, I would like to encourage you to read the letter that was submitted by the law firm of Schut, Mahelli, and Weinberger, which represents the Surf Rider Foundation. That letter goes into greater detail on the issues about which Surf Rider is concerned, and specifically, the ways in which this project is inconsistent with the applicable policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will be back at 1:00 and take as long as we need to go through the project At the Santa Barbara County Planning Commission meeting of the 18th of January 2012, we're on item number three, the Las Varas Ranch Project, and we have commenced and will continue now with public comment. Next, I would like to call on Otis Kalif. And this is part of a presentation of various trails, advocate groups, that will last for 20 minutes. So whatever order you would like to have your speakers present, that would be great. Good morning. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much, Chair Cooney, for giving us this opportunity. My name is Otis Kalif. I'm president of the Santa Barbara County Trails Council. The group of speaker, oh, here you have before you the sheets, the PowerPoint presentation that we have, and, oh, we better get it up. And you advance these by just pushing the button? Is that it? Page up and page down? Okay. Yeah. The group that's speaking today represents a tremendous amount of expertise in trail design, construction, and planning. Probably a group that, the most knowledgeable people in the county on trail design and construction. My own experience, I started volunteering on trails here 35 years ago, and I've annually, regularly built trails. I've worked for the Forest Service. I have packed mules for trail projects. I continue to pack and support trail projects. In fact, I've even become a pretty good cook and for backcountry projects. That's inevitable about, I guess, getting older, and also it's the trail activism. And I've taken the torch from Vivian Oburn and we're carrying on. This is the Green Book that Vivian Oburn published back 40 years ago proposing this coastal trail, the Mission to Mission Trail. And so we're just carrying on and trying to create this reality. Now, if the land use changes along the coast, this is our opportunity to get that trail, and this will be a national trail, just an amazing thing. The fact that we have great trails in Santa Barbara, the fact that we have this wonderful ambiance in Santa Barbara, for example, all the trails in Montecito managed by Montecito Trails Foundation is not an accident. This was all because of activism, because of people, community people like us, working for these public amenities, and the community really recognizes the value of those. The applicant recognizes its obligation and the applicant has, recognizes obligation to provide an easement for coastal trail, and it has provided that. The problem is that it's not sighted properly. The coastal trail is not a freeway, as envisioned, is not a freeway trail. It's a trail within the sights and sounds of the ocean. Very generously, the applicant led us in, on a hike, on a walk across the trail, here, maybe I move ahead, across the property last week. Pardon? Okay. Oh. Okay. And the applicant led a walk the other day, and we found that actually, compared, counter to what the applicant says, the trail would actually be pretty darn easy to build. And there are mitigations for their concerns about trail design that can be found actively used and successfully used right now in the county. And we feel that if the applicant and staff collaborates with the trails' community, solutions to these problems can be found, and I think it'll maybe expedite their application. So the first speaker here will be, the next speaker will be Ray Ford, the premier, the greatest expert we have on the South Coast in trail construction. Let me see if I can get this. Let me see if I can get this.
Page down.
Oh, no, no. Okay, there you are. You pushed this one here.
Okay, no problem. Thank you much, Chip Herson Cooney and Commission members. My name is Ray Ford. As Otis so generously said, I've done a few things over the last 30 or 40 years. I wrote my first day hikes book in 1975, and it's still in publication. It's a little different title, but the same book, a little bit more comprehensive. I've, because of my interest in trails, have gotten, over time, to be a reasonable expert in not only trail maintenance, but I started to get into the whole concept of trail design, and we now run a full trail crew right now. I was this morning over at Rattlesnake Canyon Trail with a trail crew. We've got a project on behalf of the Santa Barbara Trails Council to redo the lower portion of Rattlesnake Canyon Trail. And I do want to say that I would invite you to go visit Rattlesnake Canyon Trail because if you want to see a trail that's difficult, not only maybe to have built, but to try to maintain and update, you know, to current standards, that is a difficult trail by comparison to anything that you're going to see out in Las Varas Canyon, or Las Varas Ranch, excuse me. County Parks, we're working on a number of projects with them right now. We're working with the Forest Service. We have a $100,000 grant for a Barone Ridge Trail. We did the exploratory work. We now have an environmental impact statement that's ongoing for that. We've got a grant for the Bill Wallace Trail at El Capitan. We're working with the City of Galita. We did their master plan for Lake Los Corderos, and we're just starting to work on updating things at Elwood. We actually got a first $50,000, and we're working with the Coastal Conservancy for another $100,000 to build the coastal trail through Elwood. So we're not only fairly active, but we have an awfully lot of things that we've done. If you've been on the Gerard Trail, the McMenamy Trail, the Old Pueblo Trail, Cold Springs Trail, those are all trails that we did fairly serious trail work on. Those are difficult trails, you know, to work on. So given a little bit of the background, we have a lot of expertise in trail building. I would like to just kind of take a step back, you know, just a little bit. And one of them is just looking at this picture here. And in this particular picture, Las Varas Ranch is kind of in the center to the right. It looks a little bit less, but the lower part of the picture is Santa Barbara Ranch, and then you see it gets a little more vegetated. You don't see the meadows, you see more of the tree cover, and that's the Dos Pueblos area. And then finally, you get to Las Varas, and you see Edwards Point there. In the far distance, you can see El Capitan Point, and then onward up the coast. And one of the things you see about that is that we have this incredible wide expanse between the freeway and the ocean. It's almost a mile wide. It's probably more like a quarter mile at Macar, and then it widens, and you've got this incredible Santa Barbara Ranch, Dos Pueblos, Las Varas area, where you have this tremendous opportunity to create one of the most incredible trails that you'll find anywhere in the California coast. That would be about six miles long. The section that we've identified through Las Varas is 17,000 and some feet, so it's about 3.2 miles if you go by the design that we did for that. So what you have here is a tremendously incredible stretch of land. It's not the same as the northern, or excuse me, the western part of Gaviota. Gaviota starts getting squeezed by the mountains. You can see how they just kind of go to drift off towards the interior and the coastal plain gets squeezed off as you go towards Gaviota. So you don't have the same kind of ability to do something in that area that you have here. And what you have is absolute jewel, and to say in a nutshell, this is what we're fighting for. We're fighting for a world-class trail that will benefit the county in tremendous ways. And if you think that the public, whether it's Los Angeles, California, or else place, other place in the United States, if they're going to go to walk on a trail within the sights and sounds of the freeway, when they could be on the bluff top, you know, within the sights and sounds of the ocean, you know, that's just not the same. And I would just invite you to walk along the upper part of Las Varas and listen, and then go over to the Elwood Bluffs if you want to go to a place where you get a sense of the, you know, the coastal bluffs and see what the difference is. And the secluded beaches, you can go on and on and on. So this is a tremendous resource. Make sure I do it right. And this is looking at that from more of a map perspective. And if you look at that, you've got the counties, it's red, it's kind of dotted along the coastline there, and that's the PRT line. And you can argue one way or other about how big those circles are. We appreciate the fact that they're not incredibly small because it's sometimes you need that flexibility. But at the same time, I think it was always envisioned by the county that that set of circles was on, at least on the south side of the freeway, not on the north side. And then you look at the yellow lines, or while I say go in between, you're looking at the green line, dotted line. That's our proposed route that starts from Bacara and works its way all the way through the Las Varas Ranch and eventually comes out at the underpass by the west end of Las Varas. And then you look at that yellow line and see that, oh, Macar. They actually created a set of lines there that pretty much follow what we think of as the sights and sounds of the coastal trail. And then suddenly, that yellow line just heads north and goes on to the other side of the freeway. And basically, what we've seen with all these ranches is the feeling that you had to start moving, you know, the trail that way, and that's what we're fighting, not putting it on that side. And if it's not, if it's any one of these spots that happens, it makes it very difficult for us ever to create, you know, the scenic wonder that we would be creating here. Now, to get more to the specifics of what we're dealing with here in this particular case, my understanding, I had to go back to my crew at Rattlesnake Canyon. I just came back and I missed Mrs. Petrovich's comments, but one of the things she said, I think, was that the route was fairly difficult or extremely difficult to build. Well, this, in a, without going through a number of pictures, we have, as we go along from the east end, probably a half mile of meadows, and then you have a small gully, then you have two eucalyptus groves with gullies, and then you have lesser gullies the rest of the way. These are all easily designable features. At most, and I think it's this particular, you know, gully here, we had an option of just diagonaling around and going more towards where that tree is crossing on the right and building a bridge. So a bridge might be required in a particular place like that. We also looked at the potential of going over onto Union Pacific Railroad, and they have a culvert, narrows down, and there's a cement shelf that looks like we could build a trail across that and stay completely off their property in that section. So the trail is, from a trail builder's perspective, is one of the easiest trails that I'd ever see to build because it's 90% level, flat ground. You're mostly on the outside edge of the agricultural operations. We recognize totally that there are issues with putting a trail on the edge of the cattle operations. We also believe that there are a lot of different ways that that can be mitigated. But I think the key item of that is, all of what we're looking at is probably the least valuable part of their pasture lands. It's the edge more of the coastal bluff area, and it's also the most valuable from a recreational, emotional, psychological, all the things that go into making a coastline very special. So it's really, you know, the question in our minds is not can we build the trail? It's can we work with the ranch to mitigate all the issues they have so that we can build a trail along the bluffs and keep it out of the agricultural, not necessarily out of, but out of the issues and concerns that they have to mitigate those so they no longer become problems? We feel like that we can do that. So there are others now that, you know, we'll talk about some of the other things, but I just wanted to remind you, it's a world-class, six-mile section if a trail is built along the coast. And it includes not just Las Varas, but Santa Barbara Ranch and Dos Pueblos and Macar. Or we have something that maybe bicyclists will use, but is not going to be used by the public in any great amount because it won't lead you to any of the places that people want to go, you know, if you're on the other side of the freeway. Now, I'd like to introduce Mike Lunsford. He's the executive director or president of the Gaviota Coast Conservancy, and he would like to talk a little bit about some of the state and county policies behind the reasons why we feel this is where the trail needs to be built.
Good afternoon, missionaries. Thank you very much for our opportunity to come and speak to this important project. I think this has largely been covered, the policy issues. Important thing to see is that there is longstanding state and local policy about the sighting of the coastal trail. One of the first things I did as a park ranger at Gaviota was to scout the location and build, and then maintain 10 miles or so of trails at Gaviota. Spent 22 years working on the Gaviota Coast there. What you're hearing today is from people who are better out in the, on the trail than perhaps in a room like this, in a presentation. The weight of the expertise of building public trails is in this group. And what we're saying is that without invading privacy and without invading the agricultural operations, there is a way to cite this coastal trail. From the beginning, back in 1972, the vision was for a trail that ran along the shoreline. Now, if you were to believe many of the exaggerations that were provided in testimony previously, there could be no coastal trail. And yet, there is coastal trail through many of the coastal, there's 14 coastal counties. Many of these counties have coastal trail segments that continue to be built, and from as long ago as 1972, then in 1973, when the local community stood up, it was very important. This Parks and Recreation Trails Map, the dots, are admittedly large between the highway and the ocean for important purposes. But don't for a minute think that that needs to be interpreted separate from the policy language that goes along with it, that cites it near the ocean. and the ocean for important purposes. But don't for a minute think that that needs to be interpreted separate from the policy language that goes along with it, that cites it near the ocean. And then, you know, the language speaks for itself. Now, it's both physically feasible and aesthetically desirable to have it there. And it's very important that you understand that ESHA, one of the issues that were raised was the environmental sensitivity across these drainages. This ESHA doesn't represent, you know, a barrier to citing the trail. You'll note in the policies, and staff can reinforce this, that it is a compatible use in ESHA. And we can cite trails around environmental impact, you know, important environmental impact. So that's not a barrier. I'd like to address, just for the moment, a couple of comments about impacts to ag from other locations where there's coastal trail. And Mr. Georgie made comments about all the trash and the impacts and the theft and so forth. But there's a big difference between a rural trail and an urban, or an urban, rather, a rural agricultural operation with a trail and that in the urban area. His property is located along Hollister Avenue in an urban area, and it's a half a mile from the coastal trail segment, the O'Brien Trail. So there's not really a good comparison there. I might point out, too, that the trail that's being offered is cited by the applicant in an orchard, in an avocado orchard. Okay? And there'll be a fence, and that's appropriate, but there is a way to do this. So now I'd like to introduce Kalon Kelly, who will speak about the crossings and so forth.
Good afternoon. I'm Kalon Kelly, and I'm speaking actually on behalf of Cray-TAC, the County's Riding and Hiking Trails Advisory Committee. This is a committee appointed by the Board of Supervisors with three or four representatives from each district specifically to assist the supervisors and make recommendations on trails. And Cray-TAC has taken a great interest in this particular project. And you've got, in your correspondence, the recommendation of Cray-TAC itself. I personally have been a member of Cray-TAC for about a dozen years, done trail maintenance, trails design in the county, and also am a publisher of some trail guides in the Sierra Nevada Mountains. The staff report talks mainly about a trail configuration that actually we're not proposing, which is the one north of the freeway, goes underneath through the undercrossing, under the freeway, builds a bridge across Los Gatos. We have no bridge needed across Los Gatos Creek in our proposal at all. They do, the issue is raised about the railroad crossings. And yes, the trail would cross the railroad, either cross it at a grade crossing. Here's an at-grade crossing on the property itself. There's an at-grade crossing down in San Clemente. There's at-grade crossings all around the place. When I live in Montecito and go down by, down to the beach, to Butterfly Beach, and my walk takes me across an at-grade crossing every day I go down there. There are some alternatives to the at-grade crossings that frankly, we need to explore some more. So that's still an open topic, but they're not ruled out. The subject, the bridges across the arroyos or gullies or creeks, there will be, here's a, this is on the property, Las Vegas. Here's a very shallow arroyo that probably is just easily, we easily cross, probably does not need a bridge at all. Here's a bridge across the O'Brien Trail in Galida. There's a number of bridges across the creek there. So bridges are inherently a part of creek construction and particularly on the coastal trail where you are crossing some live streams. And here's a couple of examples of construction in areas where there is ESHA. This is north up by Cambria, crossing a wetlands. Here's the O'Brien Trail crossing a creek that has some endangered species in it. So the fact that this, an ESHA area by itself isn't, doesn't preclude the construction of a trail. I'd just say that we have had, Cray-TAC has had two interesting site visits over the last six months with the ranch manager and the agent for the developer. And they've really been very encouraging to us. We've enjoyed them. We've had good, open conversation with them, listened to their concerns. They've listened to ours. From my point of view, I think there's a very real basis for collaborating on something like the coastal trail that's being proposed here. And we'd encourage that conversation to continue. And that would be our recommendation to the Planning Commission today. I'm going to call now on Kevin Snow, who's the MTF Director, and he will conclude our presentation.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Kevin Snow, and I have been a member of Montecito Trails Foundation for over thirty years and am currently serving as its president. I have been a first district appointee to the County Riding and Hiking Trails Advisory Committee, or Cray-TAC, for almost as long, and I'm very familiar with all the trail issues in our county. For some forty-five years, my family owned a three-thousand-acre cattle ranch in the Cuyama Valley on which we ran, at early stages, stockers, some four hundred, and in later years, a two-hundred cow and calf operation. I am familiar with and sensitive to the issues of ranchers and cattlemen. However, in my experience, I have not encountered any obstacle between trails, active agriculture, and grazing that cannot be adequately addressed. By way of example, the Chimeneus Ranch, which is some eight thousand or more acres on the other side of Highway one sixty-six from us, there has long been a gate open to the public to access the Carissa Plains on the other side of the Caliente Hills. To all those years that I've been out there, I don't recall any example of issues between people entering the ranch and dealing with cattle. There's also in the San Inez Valley, at the Midland School, some ten miles of unfenced trails, several hundred head of cattle on three thousand acres. Again, no history of problem. Along the O'Brien Trail, sorry, I haven't advanced the pictures, which borders prime agricultural land for over a mile, there is no history of issues there. And we have cyclists, bikers, joggers, walkers, people of all interests. Again, no issue of problems. So, and also in the National Forest, Los Padres, there are numerous areas where there's open grazing within recreational areas. So I will just try to catch up on the page down. I guess it's this one. There we go. I'd also like to point out that in the northern part of the state, at the East Bay Regional Park District, there are places like the Cowal-Parissima Coastal Trail in San Mateo that traverses over three-point-two miles of grazing land and cultivated agriculture. They encourage people to be there. In fact, they discourage people from, you know, if you're going to have your dog loose, it's best to put it on a leash when they're dealing with the cattle because they just don't have any problem. And the cattle tend to scare the dogs more than the dogs creating a problem. So there just is a wide history of places where there is comfortable engagement between a public trail and agricultural operations. And we can, in the weeks ahead, if necessary, provide you with more information on that. So in conclusion, the honest truth is that the current proposed freeway trail is unacceptable. It lacks public benefit and does not provide a safe connection to the coast. The trail community is stunned that Planning and Development has concluded that a near-shoreline coastal trail with connecting beach access is infeasible, when we, who have encountered over the years every single kind of trail obstacle, have believed that construction of a near-shoreline trail is both feasible and desirable. So now is the time for this commission to do the responsible thing by directing Planning and Development and the applicant to work with the trails community to identify an acceptable near-shoreline trail and a point of beach access. We will look forward, we will look back one day and be proud that you have done this. We thank you very much for hearing our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Thank you all for making the effort to cohesively present your position. Our next speaker is Rosemary Thompson, and then Joe Carrari.
May I have the Cardano file put up? It's a map that I'd like to use for my talk. You need your keyboard back. And I don't need that. Honorable commissioners, my name is Rosemary Thompson, and I'm a biologist at Cardano Entrix. And my comments are directed toward Parcel Two. And there's a map that will help explain what I meant to say. I support the development envelope being moved up into the upper-left corner of this picture. I didn't put it on here, but that would be in compliance with the Alternative Three-C because it's biologically superior. But I also support allowing a trail, which I have shown on here, the red line, to go down to a small structure that could be a cabana for the residents to use and have coastal access themselves. The path would be along an existing ranch road, so there would be no new disturbance to build it. It would be unpaved, and it would not interfere with the movement of sensitive species such as the southwestern pond turtle or the California red-legged frog moving westward from Gato Creek. And the cabana also would not move, block movement of these species, as you can see, by its small size and location near the mouth of the creek. So there's adequate space between that and the railroad tracks for species to move through that area. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. It doesn't appear we have any at this point.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Carrari, is he here? Be followed by Leroy Scolari.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joe Carrari. I'm a landowner in Los Alamos, thirty-six-hundred-acre ranch, which has cattle and farming. Listening to the program that you presented here, I think this is a very worthwhile plan for the people involved. And the people involved are the landowners. They are doing what I had to do in Los Alamos, and that is provide for a way for our heirs to pay the inheritance tax in this country. When I got this ranch, I thought, gee, what a great deal I have. And then I got to looking at what it would cost my family to inherit it. And I thought, I've got to figure out a plan that they can pay for it. And that's when I came forth with a plan to divide off two parcels of land out of, first of all, there was only two parcels on the entire thirty-six-hundred acres. One was twelve-hundred, the other was twenty-four-hundred. So that meant that they would have to sell at least a third of the ranch and lose it to agriculture to pay taxes. So I came up with a scheme or plan to divide parcels off at the east side of the ranch to conform with agriculture and not change the zoning because it's all in the ag preserve. And I took it out of the ag preserve, I put it back in. But they would have these two parcels that if they had to, you could sell them in order to salvage the ranch, ninety percent of it. In other words, they would be giving up ten percent of the ranch to salvage ninety percent. And I felt that was a good risk. And that's what these people are trying to do, is make this thing more farmable and retain the farming entity without risking the loss of a large part of the ranch to pay the inheritance taxes. In conclusion, I think they're on the right track, and I'm very happy with having gone through the whole process with the county to do these two parcels. And I do, I assure the Planning Commission at that time that I wasn't out to californicate the ranch, and I certainly haven't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carrari. It's Mr. Scolari, there he is. And Dean Plester is next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Leroy Scolari, a rancher up in the Lompoc area. I'm here to support the proposal as put forth by the applicants. I think it is a very sensible approach. My first take would be that this is not a project that should exact a trail because it doesn't increase parcels or increase density, it actually decreases. But that being said, the decision has been made, and I strongly recommend that you approve Alternative Three-C as the applicants have requested. The problems with the public and trails and livestock operations, I can attest to. We don't have any trails on our property, but we have a dead-end road that bisects the properties. And we have an awful lot of trouble with trash, plastic bags, so forth. Over the years, we've lost numerous cattle from ingesting plastic bags, which is very attractive to calves. We have to be extremely careful with baler twine. Don't want to lose a twine along because they will ingest it and the attentive problems that come from that. Also, we have had problem with trespassers trespassing onto Vandenberg and particularly to visit Schumash Caves and sites, which we've had fences cut, we've had gates left open. And it is a problem that has to be monitored very closely. And I think that the proposal here for the trails as they're presented are very generous. And I think at the same time, they take into consideration the viability of the agricultural operation. If you split a range land and have to fence it for a trail, the management of the cattle on that is totally different, much more intensive than what you would have if you have it off to the side. So I would strongly recommend that you support the Alternative Three-C, particularly in regards to trails. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Scolari. Thanks for coming all the way down. Mr. Plester, be followed by Sandy Lejeune.
Chairman Cooney, members of the commission, my name is Dean Plester, and I am a longtime resident of Santa Barbara. And as a member of Surf Rider, I'm an advocate for the preservation of the Gaviota Coast. I have listened to the details of the proposed development this morning. And while I do not wish to deny the Dohenys the right to provide housing for their family, I hope the Planning Commission will adhere closely to the guidelines and statutes designed to protect the beauty of the Gaviota Coast. The loss of that beauty is unlikely to ever come in one fell swoop. It will come more likely, excuse me, it will be more likely picked to death by a hundred small projects, each in its own right, of seemingly small consequence. In order to keep the treasure from slipping away, developers must hew closely to the safeguards that keep the Gaviota intact for the future. So as you look at this project, please err on the side of coastal vistas, minimal development, the biological resources, and reasonable coastal access. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plester. Sandy Lejeune, followed by Anna Citrin.
Commissioner, Chair and members of the commission, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I'm Sandy Lejeune. I'm an I'm an organic farmer, have farmed here in Santa Barbara organically for the last 16 years. And I hope that you received a copy of my letter, which I submitted yesterday morning, expressing my strong concern that this lotline adjustment project for Las Vegas Ranch will, I believe, have a long-term negative effect on agriculture, particularly on the ranch and on the Gaviota Coast in general. The project, as it's written right now, would result in the loss of 16 acres of agricultural land. Seven of those acres are prime soils. We already have in the county's land use element of the general plan, a good, a good plan, a good way to prevent this. And that's to give, as the general plan states, prime and non-agricultural soils priority for reservation in agriculture, keep them in agriculture, not let them be developed. So in that sense, just with this loss alone, the project is at odds with the county's general plan. The environmental impact report contends that single-family residences on agricultural lands is permitted and considered supportive of an agricultural operation. I don't disagree with that. However, I think that allowing for development envelopes of two to five acres is not necessary. And it would open the door to the possibility of estate-sized residences, the mansionization that was referred to earlier by one of our speakers, from, with regard to the, to the development envelope sizes. I think that an average-sized farmhouse would not require two acres and I think that that also should be looked carefully, looked at carefully. I don't believe that the CCNRs that are written into this project will do enough to safeguard the future of agricultural operations. For one thing, as has been raised by Commissioner Brooks, it's not, CCNRs are not enforceable by the county, and for another, they're only put in place for 50 years. We're talking about less than two generations. And it's very clear that the Gaviota Coast and the eastern end particularly is the most at risk of development, and so you run the risk by not asking the applicant to do more to ensure long-term agricultural viability. An agricultural conservation easement or conservation easements would go along a long way to ensuring that and would be a better tool. And I think that the project could also result in cumulative indirect impacts related to an increase in speculative values on adjacent lands, and that could result in pressure to convert and develop additional coastal agricultural lands. Unfortunately, the environmental impact report dismisses these impacts based on the project's aim to continue agricultural and ranch operations, but it doesn't offer any assurances against future, excuse me, future conversions or continued agricultural operations. Now, we live in a very unique area. Santa Barbara County on the Gaviota Coast has an east-west orientation. It is one of, it's one of only five Mediterranean climate zones worldwide. And as you probably know, Mediterranean climate zones are unique in that they, while they comprise only 2% of the Earth's surface, they contain 20% of its known plant species. So these two, these two things, the favorable east-west orientation and the mild Mediterranean climate allow for the possibility of a wide diversity of agriculture. Almost anything will grow in southern Santa Barbara County. And so to allow for the possibility of converting, develop agriculture, current, land that is currently zoned agriculture to development would run the risk of hindering future cultivation, production, or grazing possibilities.
Mr. Lejeune, I have to ask you to wind up, please.
Okay. I think it's true that private landowners who are interested and engaged in their land have done a lot to conserve land over the years. But it's also true that community groups have made their sincere and strong contributions. I am also the chair of the Surf Rider Foundation chapter here in town, and for 20 years, we have worked tirelessly on a volunteer basis to make sure that the Gaviota Coast maintains its rural and agricultural character. You know, I always like to say that the love was already in the land and our response is to simply love it back. And the best way that we know how to do that is to continue to be vigilant and ask that as these projects come forward, as they will, and as future pressure for development continues to have its way, that decision-makers take into account the public's desire to see this land, and it's an overwhelming desire, not just private landowners but the public, an overwhelming desire to see it preserved in its rural and agricultural state. So you have an important decision before you and I hope that you will weigh all of this as you think about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Citrin will be followed by Leslie Freeman. Now, you've asked for a little extra time.
I have.
And we talked about 10 minutes initially?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Great. Good afternoon, Chair Commissioners. I'm Anna Citrin with the Law Office of Mark Chitillo, representing the Gaviota Coast Conservancy. We've already heard from our President Mike Lunsford and the trails community on the trails issues. It's my plan to mostly address other issues that have come forward with respect to this There seem, from this discussion we've had here today, there seemed to be a number of ambiguities, a number of unanswered questions, and a lot of information that is relevant that is not included in either the EIR or the staff report. And some of the issues I'll touch on will highlight those questions and those deficiencies in the existing record. First of all, this project, I just heard a speaker say that it reduces development potential or density. And in fact, what it does is it increases development potential on the south side of the highway, which is where there are numerous resource constraints, including the designated rural historic landscape, the sensitive archaeological sites, biological resources, farmland, active pastures, orchards, and a host of visual and other constraints. The subdivision in between the railroad and the highway, it creates from what are two large lots now, it creates three lots, meaning one additional home or actually if compared to the no-project alternative, it's two additional homes in that highly resource-constrained area. And if you look at parcel three, proposed parcel three, even under alternative 3C, the development envelope is located on top of prime soils and also either, also may impact a cultural site and it sounds like from some discussions I've had today with Chumash, a representative for the Chumash community, that there's more information there that needs to be made available to the public regarding avoidance of that site. So the subdivision creates a lot that is highly constrained, increases development potential, and also the lotline adjustment south of the freeway takes what is now, we would argue, one developable lot and creates two developable lots, which both allow for large development envelopes that would not be accommodated under the current lot configuration. So this, this project is highly discretionary. The landowner, I also heard in public comment just a moment ago that, that we don't want to deprive the landowner of the right to build houses on their lots. Well, they have existing legal lots that they can build houses on now. And this project reconfigures those lots, it increases development potential in some areas. And so we really need to look at, at this project, at whether this is the best we can do. And something that is lacking in the EIR and all this discussion is if the lotlines need to be where they are, if they could be adjusted to, to create better locations for development, and how that relates to the landowner's stated desire to retain the ranch in its existing state and potentially sell off individual lots to, for estate tax purposes. And if that's indeed the case, which we sincerely hope it is, there may be other ways to achieve that objective. And because that objective's not expressly included in the project objectives in the EIR, it makes it difficult to conduct that analysis. So alternative 3C, we feel does not avoid significant environmental impacts. And one of the issues is biology. The relocated development envelope does encroach into native purple needle grass habitat and coastal sage scrub habitat. And depending on where that habitat is when that parcel is developed, there may or may not be sufficient space to avoid that resource. And we would argue that parcel two, as it's currently configured, does not offer sufficient area for a development envelope of the size proposed and may indeed not be appropriate for development. We've heard a lot about dogs and how they could interfere with wildlife, but mitigation measure bio-8 does not prohibit dogs for residence. And this is something that's interesting. We hear a lot about impacts from trail users, but we don't hear anything about impacts from the residents themselves and also locating the homes where they are. You know, we heard about the sensitivity of the cattle and I was on the site and I understand this issue. Now, if you look at the development envelope on parcel one, for example, that is a pasture currently. And we've heard that, that the cows are rotated there. And yet that, I believe it's five-acre development envelope there, seems that it would interfere with the existing grazing operations and there's no discussion of that that I saw in the EIR. The CCNRs, the enforceability of the CCNRs, I understand that they've been incorporated into the conditions of approval. However, I would ask, what happens after this project is built out? Say this project is built out in the next 10 years, then how will the county enforce those conditions if there's essentially no harm to the landowner from violating those conditions? Uniform rules came up in terms of the limitation of development area to two acres, and the uniform rules incorporate within that two-acre envelope all non-agricultural access roads and all landscaping. And I don't think that's the case here. So it can't really be stated that because it's consistent with the uniform rules, it won't impact ag, because it really isn't consistent with the uniform rules. And moreover, as the Coastal Commission pointed out in their letter, there are Coastal Act policies protecting the, protecting existing agriculture that come into consideration here. So the two-acre envelope is not the only limitation. Visual and historic resources, there are mitigation measures incorporated into the project that would address, that would address those issues down the road once homes are proposed. The visual simulations accordingly are, they don't reflect what we will ultimately see on this site. And again, looking at alternatives that shift the lotlines or that cluster some of the development on proposed parcel six, we see there are three home sites there. Looking at transferring some of the, you know, maybe one home there, one of the lots there. The EIR looks at shifting all of the development from the south side there, which doesn't really make sense if you're retaining existing conditions south of the freeway. Some policy issues that I wanted to touch on, we heard from staff about the PRT map and how it's, you know, very vague. But there's actually a LCP policy, policy seven dash 25. And what this policy states is that easements of trails, so these are trails that are marked on the PRT map, this is policy specific to that, easements of trails shall be required as a condition of project approval for that portion of the trail crossing the parcel upon which the project is proposed. Well, here we have numerous parcels. The PRT map clearly crosses parcels one and two. That policy has not been addressed by staff and it would seem to mandate a bluff-top orientation for that trail. Another, let's see, Coastal Act Section 30242, which requires the, or prohibits the conversion of agricultural land, that was addressed eloquently by Bob Keats. I won't spend additional time there. So I'm going to move on to the findings because I don't want to overlook those. The lotline adjustment findings are very specific and they don't allow increasing the number of residentially developable parcels. Parcel C, which is the small parcel on the western end on the bluff, it's been asserted that that's a developable parcel, but there are very specific criteria in the finding that you're required to make about what qualifies as a developable parcel for this purpose. And the staff report is not specific enough about whether those requirements have been met, and indeed, some of them, like access, which is being provided as part of this project is not pre-existing, would seem to prevent, or would seem to indicate that that is not a developable parcel. And in fact, the lotline adjustment south of the railroad increases the developable lots. To approve the lotline adjustment and the subdivision, you're required to find conformity with the general plan, with LCP policies, Coastal Act policies, et cetera. As I just discussed, there are numerous policies and more outlined in the letter that I submitted with which the project is inconsistent. And finally, the subdivision, there's a finding for the subdivision that the site must be physically suitable for the proposed type and density of development. Again, by increasing the number of lots and the number of home sites between the railroad and, and the highway, you're creating a parcel, parcel three, that really isn't physically suitable for development. So that begs the question, why create more lots there at all? And, and would undermine the ability for you to make that finding. So in conclusion, we feel that there is additional information, a lot of additional information that needs to be disclosed and discussed, and that this project is not ready for approval and in fact, requires some pretty significant redesign to get to a point where, where this would be an approvable project. And again, with respect to the coastal trail, we feel that the appropriate alignment is along the bluff and, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I don't see any right now, Ms. Citrin.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Les Freeman and Janet Koed would be next.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. My name's Leslie Freeman. We have a ranch that's split by a county road where there's people that obviously walk, ride bikes, do whatever. And it is really hard, no matter how many trespassing signs you have, unless we build a cyclone fence 20 feet high, to keep people, dogs, trash, 200 yards from restrooms and they come up there and use our fence line. So it is, it is a problem with that kind of activity. And I will tell you this, I've been in the cattle business over 50 years. And if somebody's walking out in my pasture with my cows, or somebody's dog goes out in the pasture with my cows, somebody's going to get hurt. You cannot put a trail through the middle of a pasture. Somebody's talking about crease of plains or whatever up there, where it probably takes 100 acres to one cow, and it's out, it's huge. If you look at the parcels in the front from the railroad tracks down and you build a trail even back from the bluffs, I don't know how far legally you'd have to do it to keep everybody safe, you're cutting off most of the pasture. If you're coming from the railroad down, tracks down through those pastures, you're going to have to have it fenced, you're cutting off cattle movement and everything. And when cows have calves, most of them are on the hook. So you need to really think about agriculture, or if you just want, what a lot of people want, open space, then I guess it doesn't matter. Where the trail is above the freeway might not be as quiet as down by the ocean, but if you want somebody to stay in agriculture, that's where you better put it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Freeman. Janet, followed by Catherine Epperson.
Hi, I'm Janet Koed, speaking on behalf of myself. I have lived in Santa Barbara since 1969. I moved here to go to the university and chose this for my home because of the wonderful city and the great open spaces that surround our city. I'm happy to have been able to use the coastline for kayaking and hiking. I'm happy to have been able to use the, the coastline for kayaking and hiking and, and many other areas as well. I joined the Gaviota Coast Conservancy because I have a great concern about leapfrog development and subdivision of agricultural lands that I see becoming a trend. I'm wondering if each generation has to divide the property in order to, to keep it. I don't have the answer to that, but it's a question I ask myself as I listen today. I hear a lot about trash issues and vandalism and that's a sad fact of life, happens sometimes in my neighborhood too. I do believe that if there's designated trails, you have groups like the Trails Council, who will use them respectfully and responsibly and even maybe keep an eye open for other people who aren't so respectful. I happen to know that the Gaviota Coast Conservancy has a volunteer group who picks up trash on the freeway and, and is very thoughtful and respectful about our coastline in those respects, as well as others. I'm concerned about biological issues that have been addressed today. I believe that there will be a significant impact on wildlife mortality and disturbance from introduction of non-native species and from construction. And I thank the Gaviota Coast Conservancy and the Trails Council today for expressing the technical issues that support my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coed. Catherine Epperson, followed by Phil McKenna and then Paul Van Leer.
Good afternoon and thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for letting me have an opportunity to respond to this proposal. I will be honest, as of this morning, I just moved to Santa Barbara County personally, so I'm new to all of these processes and everything going on. However, having said that, the Parks family has been in the county. In fact, my father, as a child, farmed where Earl Warren Showground is today. So we're not completely unaware with agricultural activities within the county. So I've made some notes that I'll just briefly go through with regards to my opinion and how it reflects on what's going on in our own families' issues. First of all, we currently own and farm avocados in the Las Vars Canyon, which adjacent to, on this map, we're the two yellow lines adjacent to lot number six. So we go completely up the road, past the Doheny property, further up the canyon. So we have a vested interest in the activities on the Doheny property as well as Dos Pueblos properties, because we're right between the two, obviously. So having said all of that, we are dedicated to a successful, profitable agricultural operation. And I think the word profitable is the one that hasn't been raised yet amongst any of the previous speakers, both for and against the proposal that's on the table. Over the years, it has become more and more difficult to have a profitable operation in the agricultural arena within Santa Barbara County, not because of all the issues in Santa Barbara, while there are some, but cost of water, taxes, you know, the whole bit. It all continues to mount, making it harder and harder to be successful agriculturally. So while I admire the groups that are trying to retain the agricultural look of the community, I also would love to keep it as vacant as possible. However, somebody does have to pay the taxes, pay for the water and deal with things of that nature, which, you know, you got to deal with those sorts of things. So that is always something in our mind. In addition, being a family operation, we have the same issues that the Doheny family are currently dealing with. Thank God my father is still alive, he's 90 however, so I can't imagine he's going to be around 20 more years, but he might be around five. He's a... Yeah, thank you, Ms. Putt, yeah. He's, he'll be a while along, as long as he can. In any case, having said that, we do have the same inheritance tax issues that we will be facing and it's, it's a daunting one, trying to figure out how to keep agricultural profitable and keep the family business together and still deal with all those other issues. So I know exactly what the Dohenys are trying to deal with. So having said all of that, I'm certainly, we are strongly in support of their proposal, including the additions that Ms. Petrovich presented earlier when she did her presentation. And I have to admit that we strongly reject the position of organizations like the Surf Rider Organization and others, because we really feel that they don't reflect both property owner rights, trespassing laws, if I may bring that up, and current ag zoning, whereby, you know, without doing anything theoretically, the Dohenys could build the same number of houses that they're already proposing, given the current ag 100 lot line adjustment, of lot lines, without adjusting anything. So in, having said all of that, public trails are certainly admirable, they're not, wouldn't be something we would strongly support on our property due to the ag operations. People walking through avocado orchards is not the most safe thing to do in one's life. So anyways, thank you for allowing me to speak. I don't admire the job that you have to go through balancing both sides of the equation, but thank you for hearing my side of the equation.
Thank you, Ms. Epperson. Welcome to Santa Barbara. Mr. McKenna, welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Chair and fellow commission members, my name is Phil McKenna. I'm a financial consultant professionally and the thought just struck me as I hear about, talk about estate planning, as that being a catalyst for all of these plans. There's another way that this, that the Dohenys could, could approach estate planning and it might be an alternative for studying EIR. Maybe they could put a conservation easement across the entire property and extinguish their development rights, get some tax credits and those could be purchased. The value of the land going forward would be vastly diminished, so any potential estate taxes down the road could be paid for with the proceeds they receive from conserving their property, combined with the lower, significantly lower land value that they have. And I think this is an alternative that they might take up with their attorney. My main point that I really wanted to address today is simple and I'll be very brief. I'm a member of the GAVPAC and Ms. Petrovich said twice, once at the beginning of her comments and once near the conclusion, quote, "The GAVPAC Trails Subcommittee supports these trails." I have heard, I have not heard that from the Subcommittee. The Subcommittee has not released their report. And if the impression was to be left that the GAVPAC supports these trails, that is erroneous. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Mr. McKenna. Paul Van Leer.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, fellow members, chair members. My name is Paul Van Leer. I have lived and farmed and ranched on Santa Barbara County for my whole life. I've been managing ranches for 30 years and Las Vars Ranch for over 13. I'm here to address some of the agriculture issues because I'm the manager on the ground. I've heard different conflicting stories, so I just want to try to set the record straight. I'm going to go by parcel by parcel quickly. There's been some issues about where the sighting of these building envelopes are and how they're going to interfere with my operation. Let's just go by parcel one. There will not be any issues with parcel one, as the cattle will flow around that parcel with no problem. Parcel two, now this is a good example of why we're asking for flexibility to cite these, these two acre building envelopes. There is some purple needle grass in the vicinity of that area. We don't know where that's going to be once we actually build, if they're ever building that site. So this is the reason why we want flexibility, because what, let's just say there is purple needle grass in that area where we can't find a way to, around it. Well, we'd mitigate it. We would propagate 10 to one if we had to at a different location. So I don't think that's a problem as well. Parcel three, that would just, to put that building site, it would be a limited building site because we, we try to avoid the arc issues. That would just be up against an existing fence where there's an existing orchard, the cattle can go right around that. And then parcel four, where that would be sighted on the three C alternative, that also would just flow around. And there's also cattle that go around the existing historical structures as there is there today. Parcel five, there's an existing residential structure that the cattle just go around as well. Six and seven are large parcels, where their two acre building envelopes were ever built, they would not be an issue. Now, there's been discussion of a 16 acres taken out of ag. Let's put this into perspective. There's 16 acres of that, I believe there's probably only, out of the seven that are supposedly prime, probably only four are taken out because there's only two acre building envelopes in one and three where they're placed on. So I don't believe that seven acre is actually an accurate figure. 16 acres, in this area, there's probably an average of 10 to 15 acres per cow that you'd be necessary to graze to supply, in other words, it would take 10, 15 acres of grassland to support one cow animal unit. So that equates to like one and a half cows that you'd be taking out of production, which is a very small percentage of our ag operation and it's not even worth mentioning. It sounds like a lot of acreage, but when it comes to grazing land, it really doesn't amount to a whole lot. Back to the prime soils, I planted, recently planted, one of my recent plantings is in a non-prime soil area next to Highway 101, which is doing very good. So I disagree with the thought that you can't plant or produce something and, only in prime soils. I think most of our orchards are non-prime soils and we do very well. To mention how you farm them, it's not what ground you start out with, it's sometimes it's how they're farmed to get to where you are. There's been talk about, as soon as we, we get our entitlements, that we are going to cease the ag operation. Well, it's a viable ag operation, and why would anybody in their right mind want to cease something that makes you money? That's this, we, there is no intention of ever ceasing the ag operation. Okay, the proposed trail that, that CrayTac and others have proposed. I don't need more time, by the way, I can see that. Not to mention the issue of the habitat and the safety issues. I, the whole south side of the freeway is my calving pasture. I calve out my cows on the south side so I can monitor them for predators, for ease, ability to see if there's a problem with them during calving season and to see if calves are, need to be doctored. So when you, so everything south where the trails are proposing to go, they're going to go right through my calving ground. When you introduce people and cows, people, the cows, it triggers a response in cows, aggressive response. People, dogs, anything that they're subjecting their calves to, it's a, it's a natural trigger for them, they're going to try to protect them whatever they can. You're just, will be disrupting my operation. I have new keffers, brand new first time babies. They have a hard enough time keeping track of their babies anyway, and if you interject dogs or other people, they might run off and leave their calf there. I mean, there's just simple things that people don't understand. It's a day-to-day thing in my, in my world and it's something they don't quite comprehend. But to have dogs, people and the issues along with them, in your, in proximity to calving ground is a problem. Trash, we've been mentioned before. Anytime a calf injects a piece of plastic, ingests a piece of plastic, they're going to, they're going to die. There's nothing you can do about it. They're curious, they're going to see movement and color. So who's going to walk those trails daily to make sure trash is not present on our pastures? Probably us. Who's going to, is that a fair proposition? Well, who's going to pay for our calves that get killed? And just, there's been some speakers, just because, you know, it worked for some cattle to allow the public to go through, doesn't mean it's going to work for everybody. Everybody runs their operation differently, depending on where their operation is and how small it is, how much rotation they do in their pastures. Just because it worked for some people doesn't mean it's going to work for everybody. So my, in my conclusion, ask you to please approve this project as it is. In doing so, you'll, you'll ensure that we will, what you see today traveling on the 101 is what you will see into the future. The public will have access to a pristine beach as well as the spectacular views of our coastal trail. Thank you. Any questions?
There is a question. Commissioner Brown has one.
Mr. Van Leer, if the trail to the beach were implemented, you're still going to have people trespassing your property. The trail, is that not going to be the case?
The vertical trail to the beach?
Mm-hmm.
No, because we're going to be, we're going to do secure fencing to keep them out. That's what's, that's what we're proposing is to build.
Haven't I read in here that people cut fences?
Well, I suppose, yes, sure people can cut fences, but we're going to put appropriate fence to, to try to detain them from doing that.
I'm not talking along the, the trail, I'm talking along the...
I, as well, that's why we have, we're closing it, you know, during the night hours. Sure, I mean, you're interjecting people closer to your orchards, you have the potential to do that. But we're willing to do that to allow the acts, the people access the beach, but in doing so, you have to allow us to keep people out of the orchards.
Yeah, no, my comment wasn't, or my question wasn't about access to the orchards, but even with the fencing along the orchards to the proposed trail to the beach, people are still going to have, be, take unauthorized access through the property?
No, because we'd be fencing them off. If they cut the fence, correct, but we'd be trying to fence them out at...
Okay.
Is that what you're trying to referring to?
Yeah, okay, yeah. Then my other question has to do with the proposal for placing all the development within the development envelope. And the question regards, I think the issue was, under uniform rules, all of it is placed within a development envelope, but here it's not, but under the, your, the proposed project, not all of it would be within the development envelope. I'm trying to...
All the residential structures would be within the development envelope, two acres.
Right, so that would mean like if there were a farm worker structure, that would be within the development envelope as well.
That part, I'm not sure. No, I don't think, is that what we're discussing?
Okay, all right, so, okay. Perhaps Mr. Tuttle can address that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll come...
Later, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, everyone. Did I miss anybody? Did, did anyone not get a chance to speak? Because we've gone through all the speaker slips. Now, Ms. Petrovich, we talked about some rebuttal. I think Mr. Van Leer used all your time, but I'll give you just a minute or two if you want to hit some real key point.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Susan Petrovich again. Actually, I have just three key points and I will be very brief. One of the members of the audience handed me a piece of paper to read to you because as she listened to the presentation, she, she left early, but as she listened to the presentation from the Trails folks, she said, "The trail as proposed by the Trail Groups does not consider road bike access so that we don't have to ride on the freeway anymore." She said, "A DG or paved trail without switchbacks is needed." And she favored actually the, the trail on the north side of the freeway so that you could go from Berfuchio all the way to, through this property. So that was one comment that, that was, I had meant to make, and that is that the trail users are hardy cross-country people, but that's not everybody, that's not the largest segment of the public. When Mr. Ford was talking, I was impressed by his, his exhibit because what he saw as a great jewel for trails, I saw as ag opportunity. His trail property was actually highly productive agricultural land, the only highly productive agricultural land along the, along the Gaviota Coast, because as he says, as we get further to the west and to the north, the mountain range and the rougher country intervene. So one of the things that I would encourage you to read is this, I got it offline. This is published by the California Coastal Conservancy about the California Coastal Trail. And it also has a map for our area. And unlike all the other areas along the coast where they have specified trails, in this area where the property is located, it simply suggests that you work with the private property owners to try to find what trails you can, because they recognize the ag operation. And as our letter points out, many portions of the existing coastal trail go inland to avoid agricultural operations and sensitive resources. My other point had to do with this testimony about three, parcel three's development envelope from Ms. Citron. Apparently she did not read Frank Arredondo's letter written on behalf of the Chumash community supporting that building envelope, because it has been modified and supporting the project. So I think that speaks to the cultural. I think Mr. Van Leer covered the other issues, so that's all I had to add.
I don't think you meant to say that Mr. Arredondo spoke on behalf of the Chumash community, did you?
No, he, he called himself a representative of the Chumash community. Of course, no one speaks on behalf of the entire Chumash community, which is extensive.
I've, I've heard Mr. Arredondo on numerous projects and I think we've clarified that he speaks certainly for himself and he's well-educated on these matters and he has submitted a letter. I just wanted to be sure we, we weren't suggesting he's representing all the Chumash...
Not at all.
Any other questions before we let Ms. Petrovich? Any other questions before we let Ms. Petrovich go? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, the, the public testimony is certainly not concluded. I think that, that there'll be other opportunities before we conclude our hearings on this matter for the public to speak, though we've certainly had a very significant amount of input today. So, we would normally come back to staff, begin questions and, and then see where we are in terms of continued hearings. Commissioner Brooks, is that acceptable to you? Do you have questions for staff?
I do. I'd like to get these questions out and I'm sure other commissioners have questions. And I guess what, I'll be looking for, you know, Mr. Tuttle's, maybe some responses, you know, from you based on public comment. And again, if, if you need more time, we can wait for those responses, but certainly I have many questions.
Before you start, I'm wondering if it wouldn't be an appropriate spot just to take five minutes, because once we get into questions, we could go on.
Okay. Don't be fine with me. Yeah, but I would like to.
You'll be the first after the break.
Thank you. Okay.
All right. Five minutes. Thank you.
On the 18th of January 2012, and Commissioner Brooks has questions and concerns she wants to ask of staff.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Cooney. I have some questions, you know, about many of the issues, but I'm going to go right to this trails issue, because I think right from the beginning, you know, as I went through the EIR, you know, I have had questions. You know, in the coastal commission letter, just as an example, you know, it does say that, you know, the, you know, we should study different trail proposals, you know, maybe several trail proposals. I'm confused right now as far as what trail was being looked at initially as the alternative, if, if there was one, because I, I asked Mr. Van Leeuwen during the break, when we did our site visit, we went down near an orchard and we're on a farm road, you know, where there was some work going on. And yet, when, and I, I see where that is on the map, but then when I look at the map, what I think is, you know, a proposed trail by some of the trail proponents, that doesn't seem to be the same, in the same location. And it seems to me, you know, if some of the other policies, let's say from, you know, coastal commission or, you know, states, the coastal trails, California coastal trails, and the county itself in its trail map, you know, is, it has other possibilities, you know, it's after the fact now, but, you know, I, I'd like to hear from staff. I mean, do we legally have to go and look at some other trail proposals? I know one trail proposal was considered infeasible, you know, in the EIR, and then we went over to the other, you know, trails that the applicant is offering. And I'm just wondering, you know, with the project described as it is, you know, do we, are we required to look at other trails and can we look at other trails, possibilities?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brooks, if we take a look at the site plan here, I can show you that, the alignment of the, of the, the primary alignment of the trail that the EIR considered but ultimately rejected. And that's actually consistent with the alignment of the trail through this site that was identified in the, I want to say 1982 EIR prepared for the state parks, on behalf, on behalf of the state parks for the coastal trail alignment through the county. And that alignment consists of following along the south side, immediately along the south side of the freeway, essentially along the existing ranch road that Mr. Van Leeuwen identified as being their primary ranch road. So, it followed just to the south of the freeway along, along their ranch road, and then at the point of Godo Creek would cross underneath the freeway through the existing Godo Creek culvert, and then continue along the alignment of Old Caer Real on the north side of the freeway out to the end of the property. Now, that's the trail that's discussed in the EIR as far as an alternative that was considered but rejected. And the primary reason for it, the EIR rejecting it as infeasible were, was because of the conflicts with the ag operation. As Mr. Van Leeuwen mentioned, this ranch road is used on a regular daily basis by the ag operation. To construct a trail in this location would pose significant conflicts with the ag operation and would likely result in, in the loss of some of the orchard area to accommodate the trail. And then, when you get to the, under the culvert crossing underneath the freeway, that's, that's the point at which the ranching operation uses that pathway for moving their cattle back and forth throughout the year. And it's also their main way of getting vehicles from the south side of the freeway to the north side of the freeway to manage the property and, and maintain the reservoir and the irrigation lines. And so, given the limited width of that culvert, trying to put in a trail or public access to the culvert while also maintaining its use and availability for ag operation was determined to be infeasible. So, that was the alignment that the EIR looked at, that the draft EIR looked at. And then, we received numerous comments in the draft EIR about the fact that the EIR didn't consider a trail closer to the bluff top. And so, as part of the final EIR, looked at an alignment closer to the bluff. Of course, there's numerous iterations or scenarios of what that trail could look at, could look like. But, what was determined was, and this has been mentioned, is given the numerous drainages that would have to be crossed in order to accommodate that trail. And the fact that if it is to be a bluff top trail, you would have to cross the railroad tracks in at least two locations at grade, at, at grade crossings. And then, a trail along the bluff posing a blockage for cattle moving back and forth for those. And then, you get to the west end and there's, on the west end of the property, there's this wetland riparian feature here that would also need to be bypassed or somehow maneuvered through before hitting the Caltrans property. So, for those various reasons, again, the, the EIR determined that, that that trail was infeasible and, and wasn't further analyzed in the, in the EIR. You asked whether we're legally obligated to analyze other trail options. I think the answer to that is no, we're not legally obligated. The EIRs are required to evaluate what we refer to as a reasonable range of alternatives and believe that we satisfied that requirement. And the policies of the coastal land use plan and the coastal act and the county's comprehensive plan and the board adopted PRT, again, don't provide specific direct language specifying that you must have a bluff top trail in order to comply with those policies. There's discretion in that. And staff's evaluation of those policies has concluded that the trails as proposed by the applicant can be found consistent with, with those policies. Now, that certainly doesn't prevent you from requesting that staff evaluate other alternatives and that's at your discretion if, if you believe that the alternatives that, or the trail locations that have been analyzed, if you believe them not to be adequate, you certainly have the ability to, to request additional analysis.
Okay. We heard a comment from the trails, probably the bluff top trails proponents that, you know, they had a walkthrough last week, you know, they feel that they, you know, might be able to come up with something, you know, by collaboration, you know, and they feel that this is feasible. And again, I didn't, I don't remember, you know, the bluff top part as far as fencing, not interfering with the agriculture. And I'm just wondering, you know, if getting that information, you know, wouldn't help inform, you know, my decision on, you know, how this should play out. I don't know, staff, maybe, I, I don't know what that would entail as far as further environmental review, you know, just to say, okay, let's look at this, maybe, does it have to go into as thorough analysis? It seems as if, you know, there are already, you know, people have begun to look at some of the environmental constraints, there might be some solutions. So, you know, how, how do we get this information before us, you know, in a, in a more official way so we can make a good decision?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brooks, I think for one, we'd have to specify the, this, in order to, to further analyze it in the EIR, we'd have to specify the exact alignment for which you, you wanted to evaluate so that we could provide the, the level analysis I think that you're looking for. It probably, it would require, if there is an alignment that you feel we haven't adequately addressed and evaluated, it would require additional, additional analysis in the EIR to provide you with that information. And it would just, as, with project alternatives in the EIR, they don't need to be evaluated at the same level of detail as a proposed project. But, it would depend on, you know, the, the scope of, of the, the trail that you're requesting further information on and, and what components of that you're, you're particularly interested in as far as what we come back to you with.
Go ahead, staff.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brooks, I was just going to insert maybe a, a middle level of analysis that could be done. So, Alex has, has told you what would need to be done if you wanted to analyze it under sequin, consider it and potentially recommend approval of, of a different trail alignment. If you want some additional information, we can come back with additional information on whatever alignment you think might be something you want to consider and then we can, we could take it a step at a time. In other words, I'm not sure I would jump from today's hearing to a full analysis of a trail alignment you haven't really considered at any level of detail. So, there's some intermediate work that we can do if, if your commission so desires.
It seems to me that there are some fundamental threshold questions before we get to a particular trail alignment, even talking about bluff top trail. And one is, if there was a support that a bluff top trail was feasible as opposed to the conclusion now, would that be something that, that we would be in a position to recommend to the board or as has been contended by the applicant? Is that beyond what the county's in a, in a position to exact as a result of this particular application? That question sort of looms in my mind over everything else. You know, I don't think we disagree that it might be very appealing to have a trail running closer to the water. Might like to have a trail for the bikers up above. I, I think trail advocates and, and those concerned with the Gaviota Coast would like to see both or at least some combination. But, the question you have is, okay, this is a particular application with a very specific request and do we have the ability on behalf of the county to recommend more than the applicant has proposed? So, I just raise that as a question and maybe we go ahead and study alternatives with that question not answered, but, but I'm certainly not there.
Mr. Chair, I think that's a very good point and I think there's, there are a lot of different facets of feasibility. If the commission wanted us to study it and determine whether or not a trail could be put in, I can already tell you, you can put a trail in. You can put a trail in almost anywhere. There would be some consequences to that, but you, you could put a trail in on, on the bluff top. Then, there's the, what would the trail do and can we actually legally exact that trail? So, there are a number of facets to that. If we study that, can you put it in? It's just one piece. It's definitely just one piece.
Other commissioners, do you want to join in at this point? Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I would think there would be some restrictions in just where putting a trail because of the safety hazards. I mean, they, you can't put a trail where people might get hurt. You can't put a trail where people have the ability to do vandalism and theft and so on from these ranches or buildings or vehicles or what, all these things that happen. So, there are some restrictions. Are there any thresholds as to the size of the trail or the distance of a trail based on the longitudinal effects of a lot? You know, the length, if, if, if a parcel is, say, a thousand feet long and is, is wide and, and much narrower, can you put in a trail 2,000 feet long that meanders through the parcel and then finally gets out? I would think, I would think not. I would think that there would be some common sense approach to making us, you know, get through the trail, see what you're going to see and get out.
Well, Mr. Chair, I think what you have before you today and our recommendation is what we think that logical solution is.
Is get through, look at what you're going to see and get out. All right. Safely and without doing any damage. All right. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Blau and then Commissioner Brown.
Yeah. Well, I didn't hear an answer to Commissioner Cooney's question, and I, is council prepared to, to tell us whether or not we can extract more than what the applicant's offering here today? I tend to think we, we can't, but I, did we have to get that confirmed by you?
Ms. Van Mon.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, what I can do is tell you the standard for exaction on any project, and, and this may sound familiar to you because it's something that we covered fairly recently, and it's the Nolan-Dolan test. And this is for any exaction or condition that we put on a project. And first, there needs to be an essential nexus between the burden that you, burdens imposed by the development and the exaction. So, you're looking at what burdens that this proposed project has and then what it is that we would be exacting. So, in this case, it's the trail. And then, the second step is the rough proportionality. So, the magnitude of the exaction, again, in this case, the trail, needs to be roughly proportional to the impact that's caused by the project. So, that's the standard that you look for to determine whether or not we would have the authority to exact a trail in a different location. And while I have the microphone, I thought I could come back to your question from earlier about the railroad crossing, if this would be appropriate time. You had asked whether or not the county had the authority to condemn railroad property if we needed to do a crossing underneath the tracks. And I did find that there is authority in some cases for the county to condemn a railroad property. And it's a shifting burden and the way that it works is first, the railroad would need to show that the property is already in public use, which they'd be able to do. And then, the burden would shift to us and we would need to prove that our proposed use is a more necessary public use than how it's currently used. And if we could do that, then we would be able to go through the procedures to condemn for our use. And, and just want to make clear though, that's to be distinguished from the steps for an at-grade railroad crossing, which requires permission from the Public Utilities Commission.
And they could, they could, or could or could not give us permission.
They have discretion to grant or not grant.
Right. So, if we did the, if we do with what's proposed today, we're pretty certain that we can gain access. If we do the, the at-grade crossings, it may or may not happen. And having, having gone before the PUC to get crossings across railroad tracks, it's not as easy as you think. I've had to do it for different developments. It's not easy. Back to your first answer then. So, if I go along with staff and we're saying that we're not really giving the applicant any additional property development rights, I mean, there's. any additional property development rights, I mean, there's, there's one less lot than they currently have today. So I don't know, I don't, I can't, I can't come up with any logical conclusion that we have the right to, to extract more than what they're offering, I guess is my, am I wrong about that? I'm not finding anything that allows me to extract more than what they're offering. In answer to Commissioner Cooney's question.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, that's within the discretion, right? As the commission, as the recommending body and the board, as the decision maker, to determine whether or not the standard has been met and whether or not there's authority to, to do the exaction.
Commissioner Brown.
Thank you. Just a couple of thoughts based upon what Commissioner Valencia said and Commissioner Blau said. Don't we need PUC approval for the tunnel going underneath the railroad?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, that's correct. We would need their approval as well for the undercrossing. But I've spoken with Staff from the PUC about, about that and the likelihood and they see no, no problem or difficulty associated with that. They see it as pretty straightforward and, and in fact, they opined as to feeling that the railroad would be incentivized to grant the easement because it would provide a safe formal means of crossing the railroad and as an alternative to the current practice of trespassing and walking along the railroad tracks and crossing at grade, which does present a significant public safety risk. So see a reason that the railroad would be supportive of granting the easement.
Okay, the other issue is one of safety, which you did mention of the, of the current proposed trail. It describes, I don't have the exact language, but there's, you've got to go through this little tunnel where there's water and then you have to step down and into the beach. And I'm just wondering, was, I didn't see it, but it might be there because there's a lot of information. Was there any analysis of the safety of this trail going through or underneath the railroad crossing and high tides and all kinds of other sort of situations that you can only imagine?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, there was, there was an analysis of that in the EIR and also working in collaboration with County Parks, who would be the responsible party for maintaining and managing the trail once it was accepted by the county. From a public safety perspective, Parks is in a position that they would not open it to the public until there would be a safe passageway through the culvert, which would entail likely just a raised cement walkway along the side of the culvert that would get you out, out of the flow line. Most of the year, there's very little water flowing through the culvert. Certainly during the normal rainy season, there might be periods when the culvert is inundated and that there would be no safe passage and
And they'd have to close it.
They would just have to close it on a temporary basis.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Valencia.
Mr. Chair, I have one final question. I thought I heard there was a difference between where the people that walk wanted the trail and the people who ride bike, bikes, trail bikes wanted the trail. There is a difference?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Valencia, I believe the, the trail that seems to be envisioned by the trails advocates seems to be more of a low-intensity dirt type, unimproved trail following closer to the shoreline that would not be appropriate for cyclists. It would be, it would be unpaved and it would, there'd be some grades and occasional switchback or something to cross grade changes. The trail north of the highway is envisioned, that it would be a full multi-use trail consistent with other segments of the coastal trail. So it'd be a paved trail that would accommodate bicyclists.
Are we, I'm sorry, are we obligated to take both into consideration or just one?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Valencia, the coastal trail is supposed to be multi-use for cyclists, walkers and equestrian use. The policy lays that out.
And is there a width minimum?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Valencia, I imagine there's a standard width that we would seek to construct, but I don't know that off the top of my head.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, maybe we could wrap this up. I'm just, again, looking, one of the problems that I see with the, the current offer on the north side of the highway, it doesn't offer connectivity, you know, let's say with the other. And I know that is one of the requirements, you know, for the California coastal trail. The multipurpose idea, and I think that's what Commissioner Valencia was alluding to, we did get some letters from equestrians who supported the bluff top trail. I think this was the first time I heard that, you know, maybe one person in the biking community was saying, you know, they would prefer the north of the highway. However, you know, bikers use the 101 now and I don't know how they drowned out the noise of the cars, but, you know, that, that is kind of their accepted route up and down the Gaviota coast, just going right on the highway. I hold my breath, you know, sometimes when I drive past them there. But I just think we have an obligation, we have, you know, it's been 40 years and I think, you know, just even a mid-range study of some possibilities, again, I, I think we have the potential of some collaboration. I think our trails proponents, we have a county trails group. I don't know how much input they had, you know, looking at these, these earlier iterations of, of a trail. Maybe, you know, some say it's feasible, some isn't. I just, I'd like to see some slides. I mean, we saw individual slides, but I have no idea what that, that bluff top might even look like if, you know, some say it's feasible, not. We looked at during my sit-downs that the, the one that was really, I think, rejected. And so I don't, however long this takes, you know, maybe we, you know, as we look for a continuance, you know, that Staff could bring, you know, just a more defined trail, working with the parties, the applicant and some of the trails proponents. I think it could be done. They are talking and they probably need, you know, they'll talk some more if we request it. And I think I would like to request that.
Commissioner Blau?
Well, it sounds like we're in deliberations now as opposed to asking questions for Staff. I would not support a continuance today unless I heard from the applicant that they wish to have one. I think we've heard a very good presentation by Staff today. And based on what I've heard so far, we really don't have the right to extract anything more than what the, what the property owner is willing to, to offer. I think what they're offering is particularly generous. I've also heard from the agriculture community that to put that trail anywhere near the cattle operation is nothing but a huge mistake. And if we're serious about trying to protect agriculture, that's, I think we'd need to listen to the applicant and listen to other farmers, ranchers, I should say. And they're the experts as to how people are going to interact with cattle and what the dangers might be to that operation. So I'm not supporting, again, like I say, a continuance unless you have the applicant that they think it's a good idea, that there's going to be some change to the trail configuration.
Yeah, I appreciate you coming up, but I really don't see that you have any input right at this point. I know Commissioner Blau would like to know if you'd agree to a continuance, but we're not there yet. So stand by and let us finish this discussion just on the issue of the continuance.
Well, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to tell you that the applicant is not going to agree to any trail that goes through their pastures and through their ag land. They cannot. So if you need to deny the project on that basis, then that's what you need to do, but we don't think you have grounds to do that. So I just want you to understand that it's not fair to the applicant to keep asking them to pay for studies on trails that they're not going to accept. They feel that they're generous offering these three.
Let me just talk about the continuance issue. First of all, Ms. Petrovich is highly qualified attorney. We've heard from her on many projects. She submitted on this project, which we received over the weekend, two briefs, which is paradoxically the most, I think, we've ever received from her on any project. A small print over many pages. And then only yesterday, Tuesday, the day before the hearing, those of us who access information by email were able to get two very lengthy briefs from other parties to this case. So there's no way that I would agree to decide today based on the information that at very best I had the chance to read cursorily. There, both of those documents, all of, all three of those documents we had from different councils cited extensively from county policies. We've heard Staff talk about other policies. To me, we need another hearing just to straighten out what each policy that is applicable to this particular project says before we're in a position to rely on those policies in making a recommendation to the board. So, you know, I might be in a minority here, but I would strongly support continuing this matter and continuing this hearing long enough to give Staff guidance as to what additional information we need. Now, we can all talk about that issue. I understand Commissioner Blau's ready to go. Commissioner Valencia, I don't see how you could be, you didn't even get these legal arguments until this morning as you don't have access to email. So I, I think, I think council in general that works with the commission should understand the burdens they place on the commission to submit these very lengthy documents very, very late in the process. And if the goal is to slow us down, it works because we can't possibly absorb it. We can ignore it and make a decision, but that's certainly not the way I would like to see us go. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I would support that, the motion for continuance for, primarily for that reason is we got those rather late in the afternoon. And I think the hearing and the information presented, what, what it's done for me is that I have more questions and I need to go back and look at other areas that I didn't really concentrate on because I do have questions about those and I need to either resolve them or ask Staff if they're, if the information EIR doesn't satisfy my curiosity. So I would, I would support that continuance.
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, you're absolutely correct. The first Magna Carta I did read, but the second one I did not have time to read.
Commissioner Brooks?
Well, you know, yes, I do support a continuance and I'm just looking at my pages of notes here. There's so much more besides the trails. And the CCNR issue, we haven't heard a response from, and I think Staff has something coming. So I do look forward to reading an updated staff report, you know, to include, I guess, the language that's going into the conditions of approval, you know, to tighten up the CCNR. I believe on a Citron, I copied down, I don't know how many, you know, issues she brought up. And I had wanted to go, you know, to ask Staff to respond, you know, to some of those issues that she brought up about the EIR, well, with CCNRs, you know, the development, you know, the additional development, you know, on the coastal side, you know, the trails, the trail policies. I'm sure, you know, you were busy copying all that down to Mr. Tuttle, so there was quite a bit that I would like to have answers to, you know, or, you know, responses to.
I think
Yes, a continuance.
Mr. Tuttle did take notes and would be able to respond in part today, but you might prefer to, to prepare something more thoughtful in, in writing if we were to continue the matter. But let me know if you're ready to respond to the comments of the public at this point.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, yes, thank you. I am certainly prepared to provide responses to many of the issues that were raised by the public. If you would prefer us to hold off and respond to those in writing or with more time to develop a response at the next hearing, can do that as well. It's, it's up to your commission.
Commissioner Brooks?
It's 3 o'clock. I'm personally, I would rather see everything in writing myself because I think it's, it's very detailed and it, you know, I know there are people that are, feel very passionately both sides and, you know, will, I just want to make sure that I know and can make my decision based on, you know, the facts and the details that you'll provide. I'm willing to go longer today, but I think this could be done, I would, you know, at a continued hearing, depending on how long it would take.
Ms. Black?
Mr. Chair, I have a suggestion. I think we should give Alex some opportunity to respond to the public comments that were made today because I think if we try to do this all in writing, you're going to get another huge written document and I'm not sure that's going to do anybody any good. If there are some additional issues that we need to respond to, we're happy to do that in writing for the next hearing, but it just seems to me there are some issues we can just kind of dispose of. And then I'd like, before we decide what date we might want to consider a continuance to, to really understand what the commission is looking for in writing at the next hearing and how you want to conduct the sort of thorough analysis of the differing opinions on the policy consistency because that'll have some bearing on when I think we can manage a next hearing. So
Okay, well
Maybe we should start with Alex's
I agree that
Responses.
He's prepared to give some responses today that may lead to additional questions, so we'll continue with that. But to your latter point, I, I think a lot of the information that's raising questions in my mind and maybe others is in the materials. It's in the EIR. It's in the, the staff report at some point. It's certainly in the various comments provided to us by representatives of these various groups. But to distill it to a digestible point where we can really rely on, on at least what the policies are and how they apply to this project or why they don't apply, I think is essential before we're going to be in a position to vote.
So, Mr. Chair, I guess what I'm asking for some clarification is whether you want us to try and provide some distillation of the policies for your next hearing?
I certainly would, yes.
Okay.
Yes. And, and that's what I'm really looking for is to take a great deal of material and kind of focus it down, to hear the key issues, hear the disagreements and hear Staff's position on these issues. And I don't mean that Ms. Van Mullen's going to have to write us a legal brief that, that takes into account all the other legal briefs and comes to a conclusion. So let me call on Commissioner Blau first and then we'll go to Mr. Tuttle.
Yeah, just to try and make it a little bit easier for Staff, I heard earlier that your concern was the three letters that we received from the three attorneys. And so are you asking Staff to comment on, on the issues that the three attorneys brought up or are, because if you're asking for that, I can understand that, but I would hope that we don't make them respond to all of them, just if there's any of them that where the attorneys are correct or, or it's in our discretion, let's discuss those. But I, I just don't want to, I'm sensitive to have, to have Staff go back and do another 10 hours' worth of work when that's not really what's necessary. I mean, I heard, I did read all three lawyers' letters and yes, they're long and yes, they're very boring, but I did get through them. I assume that if any of them had any validity, Staff would have said something today, but if you're not comfortable with that conclusion and you want the Staff to go back and read those three letters again and tell us whether there's any, any valid arguments in there, I can understand that. I'm just trying to make sure, well, I understand what you're asking Staff to do and what we're going to hear when, when this comes back to us again. And then I will say before we leave here today, I would like to perhaps respond to the three or four comments that the applicant had made, asked to make changes, so that you include those in your recommendation unless there's some objection by the commission. I'm not saying they were going to approve them, but it'd be, I don't want to lose this note and I don't want to keep this note. I want to make sure you bring it back to us when we to us when we talk next time, so I'll ask that when, when we're done.
Commissioner Brown, hold one second. I just want to respond to Commissioner Blau and say, look, I'm not asking for staff to break down the briefs and summarize those, but all of the briefing cited county policies of various types, from the state coastal act, all the way down to, to county land use policy, and, and they, it came up with different conclusions. I would just like staff's view of how those policies apply to this set of facts that we have before us. That's it. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. Also, along the line of Commissioner Blau's thinking is that in the January 13th letter from Ms. Petrovich, that she had asked for other changes as well in that letter, and I didn't know whether staff was going to, what staff was going to do with that, but here's an opportunity for staff to incorporate those requests for changes along with her request for changes, her verbal request for changes. Or at least staff can discuss them, so that we have some idea.
No. Okay, so we have only left to decide whether Mr. Tuttle goes ahead with his responses to public comments first, or whether we give our thoughts about the items requested by the applicant that staff changed. I think I'll defer to you, Mr. Tuttle. Let's hear what you have to say in response to comments, at least the most significant ones.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the commission. I'll, I'll just touch on some of the key ones that we heard, just to clarify a few points, so you have that information when you're going back and reviewing the additional comment letters. We heard a comment or two about the project not being consistent with county requirements, policies and ordinance requirements, because it creates, or results in a couple parcels that are below minimum parcel size, and that being the two lots along the bluff, lots one and two, 55 and 58 acres respectively. And I just wanted to reiterate what I mentioned in the presentation, which is that under our lot line adjustment findings or provisions, if you begin the adjustment with parcels that are below minimum lot size, you can end the adjustment process with parcels that are, remain below the minimum parcel size, as long as you don't result in an increase in the number of developable parcels. Which leads me to a second point, which is, there was questions about, or assertion from one of the commenters, that one of the parcels, there's only actually one developable parcel south of the railroad. As I mentioned in the presentation, there's three parcels. You have an eight acre parcel on the west end that has a certificate of compliance, and then you have a middle 94 acre parcel that was illegally created back in 1960, but was not acquired by the current owners until 1969. And in that situation, when what we call an innocent party acquires a illegally created parcel, there's the ability to apply for a conditional, what's called a conditional certificate of compliance. And the county, the decision makers have no jurisdiction, or no discretion as to whether or not you can deny that request. Your only discretion is what conditions are placed on the conditional certificate of compliance. When you have an innocent party, what's typical is you look at the requirements, ordinance requirements in place at the time they acquired the parcel, to determine what standards or conditions you impose. In this case, the parcel was acquired in 1969, the zoning in place at the time was unlimited agriculture under ordinance 661, which had a 10 acre minimum parcel size. So, a 94 acre parcel, looking back at 1969, would have been consistent with the minimum parcel size requirements at that time. So, granting the conditional certificate of compliance legalizes that lot, and then it could proceed for, for development application. The 11 acre lot on the, on the east end, as I mentioned, it's a really narrow parcel, there really is no room for development, it's sandwiched in between the railroad and the, and the bluff's edge. So, staff has concluded that that is not developable. To be specific, the lot line adjustment findings set forth criteria for determining, for those purposes, what's considered developable, and those include whether or not access is available to serve the parcel, whether or not water and sewer is available to serve the parcel. And additionally, whether or not it's on slopes 30% or greater. Other criteria include whether or not development would threaten or impair agricultural productivity, whether or not it avoids environmentally sensitive habitat and hazards on the site, and is consistent with the compliance of plan and zoning requirements. We looked at those criteria as they relate to parcel, parcel C, the eight acre parcel, and determined that it, that it did meet those criteria, and therefore, for the purposes of those findings, is developable. So, you're starting with two developable parcels, you're ending with two developable parcels. As a result, it's consistent with our findings and requirements for lot line adjustment. There's a comment about, that the staff report or the EIR did not address Policy 7-25 of the Coastal Land Use Plan, which is a policy related to the PRT trails, and that they need to go through the parcel in which they're located. That analysis is in the, in the staff report, it is provided. I can, and I discussed it earlier in the presentation, I can go over that again if you'd like. There was a question about the, the development increase on the coastal portion of the property. And right now, the existing setting is you have four developable lots, two south of the railroad, two in between the railroad and the freeway. With the project, the lot line adjustment and the TPM, you would be going from four developable lots to five developable lots. So, you are resulting in one new developable lot south of the freeway. Essentially, what you're doing is taking one lot, one developable lot north of the freeway, and transferring it to the south side as part of this package of projects before you. So, hopefully that's clear. There was a question about, or a comment about the uniform rules and the two acre requirement, and it is true that under the uniform rules, the two acre envelope, to be consistent with the rules, does include all non-agricultural roads, typically, you know, residential driveways, as well as landscaping. And if you look at this project, it would be consistent with that. The landscaping associated with future residences would be confined to the envelopes. And the exit, the driveways, you know, as I mentioned, the access roads utilize existing ranch roads up until essentially right before you get to the envelope, at which point it turn, or right at the edge of the envelope, at which point it would become then a private driveway. So, the, the ranch roads have a dual function, which is how they're treated under uniform rules as well. If they serve both the ag and the residential, they're considered to not count towards that two acre restriction. If they're only serving the residents, that's when they get captured in that two acre, and that would be the same in this case as well. Ms. Black reminded me, as the question about the agricultural employee dwelling, that could be constructed outside of the envelope, same as in the case of the uniform rules, because it is an agriculturally regulated structure, it's, because it supports the agricultural operation, it's not confined to that residential envelope. Same if there is, you know, a barn, an agricultural barn, or other type of structure. Just one other point I wanted to mention, which is, there was a comment about the conversion of the 16 acres of, of ag land, and, and I think Mr. Van Leeuwen responded to that in part, which is that the 16 acres of ag land plus the seven or eight acres of prime soils, and for one, that would assume that the entire envelope would be developed with residential structures, which would not be the case, it would be confined to two acres within that larger envelope. So, at a maximum, on lots one and three, where the prime soils are located, it would be a four acres of prime soils that could be developed upon. At the same time, under their current parcel configuration, there are no restrictions as to where development could occur, so both no restriction in terms of the amount of land that could be developed with a residence, and where that residence could be. So, to say that this project is facilitating the loss of, of eight acres of prime soils, or 16 acres of ag land, is really no different than what could occur under the, the current That concludes my response at this point in time, if there's any other specific questions that I can answer now, or-
Commissioner Brooks, additional questions?
Well, let's see, regarding comments today, I think, I, the ones that were raised in the one presentation, I think Mr. Tuttle just handled, you know, very thoroughly, and helped you clarify that. I guess when we continue, we will come back and discuss that, the idea that the CCNRs, you know, okay. No, I think, if we're going to continue, what else, we wanted to discuss, what other aspect?
We need to, we need to cover the applicant's request to change conditions and findings, and they are set forth, as Commissioner Blau noted, in, in Ms. Petrovich's letter of January 13, and she mentioned several today. I don't think we should be debating these as much as maybe just getting them on the record as, as items that are being requested, because obviously, they'll be part of our deliberations when we enter into that. But if you want to express your views on that-
No, I, I don't need to express my views on there. All I would, all I'm asking the staff to do is, when you come back, have these list of things. They talked about the 800 foot, 800 square foot cabana on parcel two with a toilet.
Thousand.
Pardon? Thousand square feet?
No toilet.
No toilet.
Oh, eight, whatever Ms. Petrovich asked for. And I guess number five, is that the, where the house is now? And we talked about not limiting the, the addition, if they make it to east side, south side, or whatever side it was.
Two.
Yeah, we, I don't care where they add on to that one, as long as they stay within the two acre envelope. P and D landscape plan, I would tend to agree, I probably will agree with that. She asked that they not have any restriction on the fencing, that they put up whatever fencing they find appropriate to protect the property and the livestock. And the last thing was not to change the way we're doing the two acre within the five acre envelope. So, if you'll make sure those two things are readdressed at the next hearing, I will throw these pieces of paper away.
There were a couple of others that I'd at least like to put on the record, unless Ms. Petrovich informs us that they're no longer concerned. She indicates that finding, or condition 34 regarding cultural limitations, there is apparently a prohibition on ground disturbance, which she says is unjustified, so that would be another one. Condition 57, grading lim, limits, she objects to the imposition of a grading limit on the grading plans is, as being excessive and unwarranted. And then, 74, the CUP expiration, we request the CUP for a private water system either be for an initial term of 10 years, or be as long as possible with a provision allowing the owner to request a five-year extension. And staff will pick up any others that are in there, just so, those are highlighted for our discussion. Additional matters for staff in terms of returning? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, I had a question on visual impacts. Is, the views from El Capitan State Park considered a public view? Okay, and has that been, is that included in the EIR? Okay.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brooks, yes, it is.
From the, from the park now, not the El Capitan Ranch, the State Park? Okay, thank you.
From the State Park.
Okay.
Anything else, Commissioners? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, one thing I didn't see, is there any proposed, or at this point, do we have to come up with some kind of screening for the parking for the, the one trail? I don't, I didn't see anything, except that it, you know, it wasn't going to be paved, but I think that site might be somewhat problematic going down the 101, as far as a visual resource.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brooks, that would be at your discretion if you felt the need to, to add-
Okay, I would like that, yeah, I'd like to take a look at that. Regarding fencing, I mean, if, there, there's some questions, you know, that the applicant has about appropriate fencing, but if another, we didn't see much on fencing with other possibilities for trails. I mean, if we look at the fencing, or there was some disagreement, I believe, the fencing going down, I guess we're calling it the, the lateral trail, yeah, whether that would be chain link, or if it would be some other type, and then how that could be accommodated, but also if there was another trail feasible, you know, how that fencing could be incorporated, to, you know, as far as separating from, you know, keep it, the ag viable, and private property rights, and privacy.
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the document, I remember reading that the white fences were prohibited, but how do, how do we control that? Because up and down the highway, you see fences painted white now. Is that something new? Is, do we have an ordinance, or do we have a policy, or how do we control that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Valencia, there is, there is one site east of the property that has extensive white fencing, and I think in, in part, that's, the restriction on white fencing on this property is in response to that. It would be at your discretion whether or not you felt that appropriate restriction on future fencing, and it would just be a, treated, consistent with our other conditions in terms of monitoring and enforcement, and-
Condition of approval?
Condition of approval.
Oh, all right, thank you.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, I had, an issue was a possibility that was mentioned regarding circulation, and in one of the letters, Caltrans mentions the possibility of closing that median, and if we're talking about ag viability, I know that is very important, you know, to not only Las Vars Ranch, but some of the other adjacent ranch. Could, we, oh, it's, I think they had one sentence at the end of the, of the letter, and I'd like to find out, get some more details about that. At one point, let's say if, you know, we are putting in a 30 unit parking area, you know, if, and, you know, adding a little bit of development, you know, to the, at what point, would, could Caltrans do that? And, I mean, that really, I think is, would have a great impact on ag viability, you know, for that particular ranch, so.
Okay, let's look for a date.
Mr. Chair, I would recommend that we continue this to February 8.
All right.
I think February 1, given the requests of the commission, is a bit too soon for us to reasonably prepare this. I would ask one clarification, and that is whether or not the commission wants us to do any additional work on trails. Commissioner Brooks asked for it, I haven't heard that from the commission itself, you heard from the applicant's representative saying, no way, so I'm, I'm just looking to get some direction from the commission. get some direction from the commission. Other than that, I think we understand what you would like to see at the next hearing.
Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. The proposed trail is through these orchards, and it may be in the EIR, I'm sorry, that's a big document, and I don't recall it offhand, but there is this, this ranch road that goes this way, through, in other words, through orchards. So if staff is going to come back with some sort of proposed alternative look, I guess I don't really see the difference between one road going through orchards, and another road going through orchards, I realize there's an at-grade crossing, and that may be an issue, but I'm not sure what staff might be coming back with. So is that what the altern, we don't know, just some other alternative? We don't know, okay.
Mr. Chair, just to be clear, I don't know what the commission would like us to come back with on trails. You've seen our recommendation, and if you'd like us to come back with anything more, then we need to know what...
So you're asking us to tell you what the alternative is?
Well, generally, if you want us to come back with something.
All right.
And one alternative available to us at the next hearing is to say that the trails that have been offered by the applicant are not sufficient, and so we can't recommend this project. So it's an up or down based on the trails. We can't compel the applicant to come up with a compromise trail somewhere other than they've offered. All we can say is, from our standpoint, it's not acceptable. So the question for you, Commissioner Brooks, I think, comes to whether there is a particular trail alignment in general that you would like to see further explored, so that you could suggest it for the project.
Mr. Cooney, if I could?
Sure, I asked Commissioner Brooks a question, but she's thinking of an answer.
Okay, good, so I have a question for, maybe for staff. If the applicant is unwilling to reimburse you any additional money for any additional studies, how are you going to get paid? I mean, if I'm the applicant, I'm writing you a letter saying, "I'm not paying any more money, I want an up or down decision based on what I've already sent you." Because I understand how that works. At $180 an hour, if you spend another 10 hours doing this, it's another $2,000, and if they're not willing to do it, you're just wasting their $2,000, and wasting our time. So I would want to know that the applicant's willing to fund that, otherwise, answer our questions based on, you know, your own staff time, and we don't have the money to do additional studies or additional issues.
Commissioner Blau, you raise an interesting point. We've never asked an applicant, "Will you fund this study versus that study?" Once we get into deliberations with the planning commission, the planning commission drives that. Now, given that the applicant said, "There's no way we're going to agree, and we'd rather have a denial," I sort of leave it to you, I suppose, that they could come back and tell us not, you know, that they don't want us to do any additional work, and they want to come back on the 8th for a denial.
The problem with that...
It's a little bit awkward, because we don't typically ask...
It's not quite that simple, because if, as the trails advocates have emphasized, there's a feasible coastal bluff area trail along the railroad tracks and so forth, they're vague about exactly where it should go, one alternative would be for us to say, "We recommend to the board that this project be approved, provided that the location of the trail be along here." Now, that's, in the applicant's view, that might be tantamount to a denial, but it's a different decision, I think, from our standpoint. So we're not going to be able to do environmental review of a new trail, and the impact on ag operations, and butterfly habitat, and all the rest of it, but, you know, I think, to the extent we could have a more full and complete discussion of the alternative, it would be useful for us. So that, I'm supporting Commissioner Brooks' notion, but without, without asking you to reinvent the wheel. Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, if the question to me is, "What kind of trail am I recommending," or something, I'm recommending a trail that meets the benefits of three types of users, walkers, bikers, and equestrian. We shouldn't, it shouldn't just be for walkers, and it shouldn't just be for bikers, and it shouldn't just be for equestrian. It should be a trail that, because it's very unique, very short in distance, maybe two miles long, it's probably one of the nicest ones, and it should, if possible, meet the needs of all three groups. That's my...
Mr. Brooks?
Yes, but to go along with what Commissioner Valencia just said, which, you know, again, possibilities down the line, I think it's the coastal trails people who talk about a braided trail, you know, that you can have, you know, you can have two segments, you know, to appeal to, you know, different types of trail users. I'd like to just go back, and I think Commissioner, Chair Cooney, what he expressed as far as, you know, what I'd like to see next time, that could become a recommendation, but I just need more information about that, you know, the possibility, the feasibility of something else, and then, you know, maybe if, you know, the trails people presented that in such a fashion that perhaps then the applicant would see, you know, if these are, if we can keep the agriculture viable, not have interference, screen it, you know, maybe, maybe there could be some type of compromise, but I think, you know, we'd need to see that. No study, whatever, but I just want to see what the trail looks like.
Okay, Ms. Black, is that sufficient guidance? It's blurry, and as someone said, rough, but I think we're looking for a little more help with the trails. So are we okay with the 8th? Is everybody okay with the 8th? All right, then, Commissioner Brooks, why don't you make a motion?
Okay, I move that we continue to February 8. Second?
Commissioner Brown, seconds. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 And one no.
And Commissioner Blau is opposed. So the continuance is decided by a vote of four to one. Do we have anything further on today's agenda, Ms. Black?
No, we don't. So we'll be convening to a special hearing next Wednesday, and we expect that to, we're going to agendize you to start at 10:30.
10:30. All right, see you everyone next week. Thank you very much.